Councilmember Brian Rowland?
Here.
Councilmember Jonathan Randle?
Here.
Councilmember Marie Erden? Councilmember Herman Thomas? Councilmember Paulette Barnett?
Here.
We're having a forum. Preaching out. I'll lead the education of those in the world, please stand. Father, we thank you for this opportunity together as a city. We ask that you would lead us and guide us in the way you would have to go. We thank you for the purpose to serve and we ask that you restore your blessing on each and every one of the Sunday, all the families, given traveling grace from this place, help us to live in harmony, peace, and come to an understanding that we're all in this together. Using of blessed and blessed in thy name, amen.
Amen.
Citizens comments. If you want to make a comment, you fill out a card for those who are new, those who know the team, if y'all want to turn your team. Ms. Carla White?
Greetings, everyone. My name is Carla Davis White, I want to continue the City Hall Building Project Comments on National Earth Destruction on Vice Important to Tax Payers. The city is responding to a complaint with the Texas Department Insurance on fake bond, but they should have given us look after taxpayers. And citizens initiated. We have two issues here. One is the fake bond, and that is under investigation by the district attorney's office. The subject is the missing funds. The city still has an obligation, responsibility, to at least make an effort to collect those missing funds. The city attorney gave a letter to the council members that indicate they owe at least six figures. This letter also stated research showed the company had few or any assets to collect, and the city filed a complaint with Texas Department Insurance. It also stated the city council determined not to proceed legal action against the company. These statements are false, and frankly, the attorneys referencing things on this letter is simply not truly misleading the city council members. I have requested documents to support these statements under Texas Open Information Act. I received a letter from Attorney General Office that basically says the city found no information responsive to your requests. I also want to state a couple of things relationship to renewing a contract for J.J. Johnson, the city accountant. This position should be impartial to all city peruse citizens. But in the January two thousand fourteen meeting, Mr. Johnson stated folks on the orange room need to pick up and move by the mayor. He also stated to me in his room that South had no debt they owed to the city. Well, I want you to know that instead of me asking for a third party audit, it should be that position, the city accountant asked for that. The cities never took action to proceed and recruit any funds. The mayor even released a statement stating that the city council signed up to pursue litigation. So now we have one part of the city, the city, not matching statements for another part of the city. I request a third party audit and access to the agenda submitted for several months now. The city needs to stop playing games and do their job. I'm not saying it is, but this is certainly giving the appearance of corruption. This should be a time for the city to be transparent for the growth and business opportunity moving this direction. We have to clean up the past, though. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. J.M.?
Greetings, Prairie. I'm coming here just to invite all organizations or community service groups to come out and help clean up Echo Street. We're doing a small cleanup where we're just gonna pick up some of the trash. I actually live off Hardest, and every morning I go to school, every morning I go to work, I see trash home on Hardest, and I see trash homemakers. And a couple of us at the school actually got together, decided to get together and actually clean up, or set up a day to clean up. And we're looking at Friday from about five to about seven P.M., so if anybody wants to come out and help, you're more than welcome. We're gonna be at Ammestow Bookstore, and again, you're all invited. I hope to see you there. Again, my name is Jonathan Miller. If you have any questions, I should be out here, should be around somewhere, so, thank you. Yes, sir. Five to seven.
Thank you. Dr. Priscilla Harris?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Dr. Priscilla Harris, and I came here to speak to you again about Communities That Care. I work with Dr. Sam Aronwa on Communities That Care in Prairie. And it's a change process that we're implementing in Prairie. And it's a process to prevent crime, disease, and property in our community. I wanted to give you two updates on Communities That Care. The first update is that we'll be holding a workshop soon for the community and for our city council members. The date hasn't been decided, but we'll invite the community members to attend that so you can learn more about Communities That Care and how you can participate and volunteer hours for this cause. And the second change I wanted to, well, change, not change, but update, I want to tell you about is a family history class that Dr. Sam is organizing for the city of Prairie. So it'll be a place, it'll be a class where anyone can attend. And we'll map out a way for you to map out your family history and learn more about your history, and you'll be able to create documentation so that you can create this history for your family. So we do look forward to spending time with you all on Communities That Care. And please let me and Dr. Sam know if you have any questions or if you want to get started right away before we begin the workshop of the family history class. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to reiterate on the two issues that Ms. Carla White already touched on. And the first issue is item number fifteen on the agenda. And this is for the council members. It's pertaining to Mr. J.J.'s contract. And as we at the city try to move forward and try to start anew and have a new beginning, a new start, I'm requesting just the same way that we did with Mr. Lee Van Richardson, help us start anew by helping us get a new accountant. And on item number fifteen, I humbly request that you vote no on renewing Mr. Johnson's contract. So that we can start anew. We're always complaining and saying, well, this is how we started, over, this is how we began. And then, I believe, Mr. Rowland Bryan, you're saying is this is how we bring back power or bring back, you have some type of thing that you're trying to reiterate. Let's start anew by not having Mr. Johnson's accounting firm represent us and give us the services that they provide. We need to start somewhere new with some other new accountant that's gonna look out for our best behalf. And the second item I wanted to speak about was the construction of the city hall. Ms. Carla White, Mrs. White already spoke on that, and I've been following up with it, and I've been actually putting my open record requests in and trying to find out what is the truth behind it. We've been giving letters by Mayor Jackson, and he's been misleading us. He's saying that actions have been taken, that they're looking into it, that our citizens' interests are being taken care of, and he's watching out for it, but they haven't. The police chief that was on duty during that time was now county commissioner, Jaron Barnett. Mr. Barnett, Chief Barnett didn't file a complaint with anybody. Where are those records? Chief Barnett, Commissioner Barnett, now? There are no records showing that he filed anything. He, if he speaks tonight, or whenever he speaks again, that should be on the first thing that he says, hey, this is what happened. We're looking for transparency in the city of Prairie also, not just in Walla County, and we're not getting any answers. Mrs. White is doing a hell of a job with her diligence, following up all the time for a year and a half now on everything, and so have I. More than three or four years, we've been trying to track this thing down, and Mr. Mayor has not spoken on it. He sits silent on a lot of issues, the fire department, the construction of the city hall, and a host of other issues. We need to get rid of Mayor Jackson eventually, but we need to start with our accountant, as well as Mr. Richardson and a host of other people that need to get out of Prairie.
And Mr. Larry, your three minutes have been started.
Thank you.
Mr. Larry?
Good evening, councilmen and ladies and gentlemen. And I don't want, a question has come up, as I think we all remember that Mr. Jones, Attorney General's resignation. And to my understanding that he committed was sworn to fulfill that position. I had a chance to talk to a couple, few of, some of the council members, and it appears to me that you are, that the council has not had a meeting to select a committee. I do know that also that there was not a date. They said pick up applications. There were no applications. You receive a resume. I also understand that there was stipulation put on what was needed. I saw the announcement said at least a GBD. GBD? Yep. At least a GBD. Masters, BS of Masters in Prairie. So I'm wondering now, who did file for the position? Just in terms of qualification. You know, and I believe that, it's my belief, that, you know, we always talk about, I think, I tried to offer my services to the city to join the expanded zoning commission. And Mr. Jackson told me, he said, well, now I have something else. I'm waiting, I'm still waiting. Ladies and gentlemen, as I said, I'm not polit- campaigning, I'm not trying to run, you know. But I would like to see this city progress. I've spent a lot of time, and we did, Mr. Jackson and I, and so have us, did what we do. And we're going to a fairly transparent within that date because our cell phones and video, the college, this stuff wasn't available at the time. But trust me, all the way from the state through the nation, Mr. Council, we are accountable. Mr. Rowland, I don't say you can move over by me now, throughout, up to our neighborhood. Also, I've asked you about eighteen-hiller truck that's backed up on Alene Street. I would like for the utilities, or you go yourself, to see the damage. Nothing has been done. The water has stopped up. Nobody gets to the car. And, you know, I think that if we can have the town, whatever, to tear down a building, at least we could fix the car. And that's not asking a lot. I believe that, you know.
So your three minutes have been started.
Thank you, Mr. Larry. You need more time, Mr. Larry?
No, I don't need. Thank you, Rowland.
Do you have a citizen's comment?
Yeah, I didn't get a chance to sign up, but I'd like an opportunity to say something.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, citizens of Prairie. Stand before you once again. I come here just to say that I'm very displeased with the actions of our city employees. Several weeks ago, we had a call meeting here, and they didn't have a quorum. And of course, nobody seemed to know what the time was to call for quorum. Fifteen minutes is usually a lawful time. Of course, we waited thirty or excessive forty-five minutes. During that time, I raised a question. Nobody seemed to have an answer, so did the mayor or the city attorney. Nobody seemed to have a definite answer. They finally called it, but one of the city employees got up and said something that she shouldn't have said, it was Ms. Linda Durham, and of course, she may or may not admit it, but I did confront her on Friday, and she did apologize for the comment, that's your man. Now, you can feel about me how you want to personally, but as a city employee, you need to keep your personal feelings to yourself. As a citizen, I have the right to say what I want to say. This is a free country. Thank God I live in a country where my voice can be heard. And how you feel about me personally is your business, and that's up to you, but as a city employee, you should be held to a higher standard. I was very disappointed in Ms. Durham's action. I only know Ms. Durham from her time on the campus. We don't have any personal dealings, so she shouldn't have anything to say about me. She's harboring the feelings of our head administrator. And I just want the city and the people to know how our city employees are acting, reflecting an attitude of someone else. She has, she doesn't know me from Adam, but yet she can form an opinion about me. And once again, I just want the citizens to know that I thought that was very unprofessional and very unbecoming of a city employee. And that's all I want to know. Thank you, Mayor.
Please fill out the card.
I will do that, thank you.
Mayor, City Council, citizens of Prairie. You have your audit in front of you. You have a clean opinion. There are three opinions you can get in an audit. Clean, qualified, or disqualified. You have a clean opinion. There'll be only three. If you get a qualified audit, that means, okay, we have some material things changed that we need to make, but the audit is still clean. Disqualified means, okay, this audit, the financial statements are bad. Audit is based on samples. I don't go in and check every number. An audit is based on getting the financial statements that the accountant has provided into during the steps of the accountant's presentation. Basically, that's what I've done. It's very technical. I found no material items that need adjusting. Of course, in an audit, you have changes you made, recertification, or anything. Most of them just to get those into during the steps of the accountant's presentation. There's a difference between what needs to be presented and basically it's like a property loss statement. And again, you all have a clean opinion.
Can you, for some of the citizens, can you kind of explain the process or the difference between what your company does during the audit and what Mr. Johnson does as our church report?
Sure.
And his role, because I think some people don't understand the difference.
Yeah, and that's been a, that is a misunderstanding, specifically by a lot of people. Mr. Johnson prepares your financial statements, the property loss, the balance sheet, basically keeps the books for City of Prairie. I come behind him, basically, based on samples, and check his work. Again, based on samples. I don't go behind him and check every number. We're dealing with materiality, you know. Everything. And there's a test I do. With these tests, I either say, okay, if there's something materially wrong, or if it's not material, go back to the account. Next, can we adjust this, or do we need to change this around? A lot of things get misinterpretations. I don't do the books. That's up to the account. Again, this is just a sample verification. And most of the changes that are made are just to put it into presentation. Certain, the bond company requires it to be presented in certain ways. They detect it for variety, to be presented in certain ways. Basically, the numbers that you want to deal with in a day-to-day analysis come from the reports that he provides. I, again, I deal with, you're looking this way. He's going right here, and I look at it from up top.
How long have, can you also, how long have you been auditing books for the city of Prairie?
I believe it's been about six years with my firm, and before that, I did it for four years with the prior, Mr. Bassett, I'm proud of him, where I was the lead auditor.
You have a question, Mr. Payne? No action, it's not.
Well, yeah, because another thing people don't understand about, when you do an audit, once I give the contract to you, and I go through the proper paperwork, I mean, the audit's done. I mean, the question comes after the call, but instead I came back with a bad opinion, a disqualified opinion. Whether you all like it or not, reporting is reporting. It's done.
When you just spread this upon the minutes, Tony, just make sure you got the same record as I did before. Spread is harder upon the minutes, yeah, rather than trying to fold it up. It is what it is.
Yes, sir.
Any problem, spread this upon the minutes, council? Thank you, Mr. Payne. Alright, well, presentation by Dr. Sam Aronwa and Priscilla Harris, Communities That Care. And Dr. Aronwa, I've talked with Dr. Harris, and I know there's a lot more that y'all have to say, and I want to do. If we can set a date for a workshop where we can invite the citizens to come back and really give you the quality time to really make this out and start getting some nuts and bolts done, I think that would help. Every night, if we can do a presentation and then, you know, kind of elaborate here in the near future.
Yes, sir. I will do that, Mayor. Good evening. I'm Dr. Sam. Dr. Priscilla is standing next, so I'm gonna speak. We were hoping, like Mayor, it's been a while, we're hoping for maybe an hour workshop, but we didn't quite get it worked out. So I'm just gonna speak, and Mayor, feel free to tell me to shut up, and I'll be happy to. Sit down, but we really are looking forward to coming back and being able to explain what Communities That Care is. Tonight, I just wanna, with the few minutes that I have, I just wanna highlight some of the important things that's happened. Last time I came here, I think I was an angry boy. I am very happy tonight. So let me report some progress. We met with the, and I'm just gonna give key words for them. The first one I have here is CTC proposal. One of the things that I do as a director of CTC is to meet with key leaders of coalitions and organizations. It could be a business, it could be Chamber of Commerce, it could be a world-class university. What I learned from Dr. Wright is the second in Texas, I believe. And so, that is a privilege for me. It's a, so this past month, we were able to sit down with Dr. Wright and the vice presidents and all the deans at Prairie A&amp;M University. That was a very important meeting for us because we've been looking forward to working with the university employees and students. And what we ask during these meetings is for the chief executive and the top executive to give directives to their employees and in this case, students, to support CTC if they can. We were able to do our research and find that students can actually donate as part of their coursework. They can donate ten hours a month to support CTC, and that's on the lower end. They could actually go up to fifty or a hundred hours. But we ask for the very minimum, which comes to about one or two hours a week. That we wanted every employee and every student at Prairie A&amp;M University to donate, so that comes to ten hours a month. We worked it out where they will get a grade in the class for donating those hours, so it's not really giving it for free. It would be due into their classes if the professor approves it. Some of them can also give it as what we call service learning, so they get recognized for it if they're part of the club. So we thought that was low-hanging fruit. Dr. Wright was very excited about it. He moved us on to the vice president, who reviewed it and told us we should go ahead and talk to the deans, and we did. We haven't heard from the deans. The deans are like the chief executive of each college. So we really hope that they buy into supporting CTC. It would be a boon for your community because we expect to get a hundred thousand research hours every month from this collaboration, which will be more than enough for us to document our effort, and that allows us to do what we call scaling. If they come and do that for us, then we can go to other cities, and they would have documentation from day one how we started, and they can just copy what we've done. And what we hope is that one million neighborhoods in the world can replicate what we're doing here at Prairie, so we're excited. What is missing is the voice of the community. It looks like it was me, the mayor, and County Commissioner Barnett talking to Prairie. What we'd like to see is really for everybody, every citizen and every leader in the community, to reach out to them and say that this is a good program. That would go a long way to hastening the process of them coming to approve this. So that's what I wanted to plead with you tonight. If you like this idea, would you reach out to the deans and the leaders at Prairie and tell them how important it is? Without their support, we would struggle. We would have to go ask for other universities, maybe Texas A&amp;M, College Station, maybe up to Houston. We think that this is a gold mine, that we're actually sitting in, right in our city is a world-class university. It's a win-win. What we promised them is that we'll help them with recruitment, they're trying to recruit more students. This is a fertile ground for recruiting. We promised them we'll help them with retention. Students like to be part of something that is actually proven to work. So that would help. We promised we would help them with what we call relevance. If you're a student, you're sitting in class, and I am a professor, some of the tough papers you write are really useless. It's good you write something about CTC which is helping save lives and save money, and it's something you put on your resume, and you can probably show it up wherever you go. And that's what we're doing for them in exchange, is to promote the university and show what they are doing with all the communities. And so that's what we are doing with Prairie. Why am I spending more time on that? Because we want to do that for McDonald's, we want to do that for Chamber of Commerce, we want to do that for every organization. Our church would be great, you know, the Mormon church, we had a meeting with President, President Mortensen. We also met with Dr. Wright in that meeting, and he promised that the Mormon church will support this program at City of Prairie. On the side, I asked if we could offer a family history class, because the Mormon church has the largest collection of family history for black people. I don't know if you know that, and they are not very black, but they have access to the records. So if you want to know about your forefathers or your great-great-grandfathers, the Mormon church have access to their records. So I asked President Mortensen, can we have that class here and give people access to their family history going back a hundred years? He said, with all pleasure. And Dr. Wright said, you could go ahead. So we want to offer that class. It's not my area. I'm not a history professor. We work with Mayor Jackson and anybody that knows how to teach history to teach that class, but I'm going to facilitate it because I'm invested in it. I want to talk about pay for success. People have asked me, how do we pay for this huge project? Federal government and state governments have a part of money to pay for programs, but what they are asking now is you have to prove that it works. So we want to tap into that funding, so that if we succeed, people will be reimbursed for their efforts. So if you have a business or organization, you want to be part of it, we can do a pay-for-success agreement with you and help put it in a grant. So if you do succeed, you'll be reimbursed by the government. That way, politicians and elected officials don't have to worry about answering to the citizens if the project fails. So you take all of the risk, and if it works, you get reimbursed plus some profit. So we're pursuing that to help pay for Communities That Care projects. Well, we met with the Walla County Sheriff. I'm pleased to report that we presented CTC to them. Law enforcement is a big part of CTC because we're trying to prevent crime. We met with the sheriff and his chief deputies, and we're waiting to hear from them. What we hope to do with the jail is instead of expanding, building more jails and locking up more poor minorities, we want to educate them. So we partnered with Bill Gates and University of the People to offer what we call TOES to everybody that is arrested or incarcerated. TOES stands for tuition-free, online accredited degrees. And the sheriffs have not gotten back to us, but we like to make the jail also a university, so people get an education and hopefully we can educate them out of crime. How am I doing, Mayor, should I?
We need to wrap it up.
We need to wrap it up. We have one we call CTC media. I went on a show on the hill with Mayor Jackson. I don't know if you know that, he has a radio show. And graciously invited me. I got to speak for thirty minutes, question and answer, about Communities That Care. We were invited to do a column with Walla Times, where they haven't approved it, but they said we can talk about it, which is encouraging. If you have access to media and you know how to write or promote things, we want to tap into those two. Very much into these areas. We have what we call CTC policy, where an organization can come up and do a resolution that they actually support CTC. And one example is that this city council graciously passed a resolution, and pleased to report it's signed now, and it's probably displayed on our website. Is it our first one? Well, we presented to all of the cities, well, maybe not all of them. We have one pending in Prokshire, Hempstead, and last night we presented one to Mayor, Mabrogah. Yeah, Mabrogah, over at Walla City. So if you know politicians, top politicians, we want to get this thing in front of them so they can do a policy or resolution, whatever they are going to do to support CTC. That gives us access to actually begin the process of educating them and hopefully doing projects together. I, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, guys. Oh, somebody's checking for Councilwoman Roland, is he still out there? We'll take some items and we'll double the plot action. Item number nineteen twenty-two, Chief, Chief Johnson out there. We go to item number seven, approving the ratification of the county chairman for March twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. What's your pleasure?
What's the question? I don't know if she would have been asking about the seven hundred and fifty, so I just wanted to remind, you know, a few months ago, we requested the itemized, you know, I can take it where that seven fifty goes, so I'm gonna request that one more time. But, uh, if not, then I'm gonna have to no longer vote to approve that seven fifty. I just could, we talked about accountability, we should support that accountability, so just, we talked about that, so that's not the, not the issue.
Mr. Mayor, you need to first decide if you're able to talk about the motion, so someone needs to, uh,
Make a motion.
Make a motion if that thing can save you some.
I'm moving to be approved, be the ratification of the county chairman for March twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen.
Second.
Remove the purpose second, and we verify county chairman for March twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number eight, consider the possibility to take action on the resolution on the county chairman's here. You can move on. Uh, approval of the minutes from February twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. What's your pleasure? Man, he's not, I, I don't see Mr. Roy Perry. They're just going to remember now.
So, now, talk, talk about the question.
Well, I mean, he's not, he, uh, did you have a question?
Does it have anything to do with, does him having anything to do with that movement?
It would help if you would, uh, uh, item number nine, the minutes from February twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ryan.
I'm moving to be approved, the minutes from February twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen, second.
Remove the purpose second, and approve minutes from February twenty-fourth, twenty fifteen. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number ten, discuss take action on tax refund, thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents, uh, to Coburn, Geraldine, and account number, uh, PV account seven-one-four four zero zero dash oh one nine dash two six nine zero zero zero. Invoice number five seven oh two. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I'm moving to be approved, the tax refunding amount of thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents to Coburn, Geraldine, Z. Account number seven-one four four zero zero, zero one nine two six nine zero zero, invoice five seven zero two, second.
Remove the purpose second, and we approve the tax refunding amount thirty-six five fifty-two cents. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number eleven, take, discuss take action on tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents to Ramos, Jose, and Maria. City inquiry account seven-two, one-two-zero-zero-zero-eight, one-two-six-zero-zero, invoice number five-seven-zero-five. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ryan.
I'm moving to be approved, the tax refunding the amount of thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents to Ramos, Jose, and Maria. City inquiry account number seven-two-one-two-zero-zero-zero-zero-eight, one-two-six-zero-zero, invoice number five-seven-zero-five, second.
Remove the purpose second, and we approve tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents to Ramos, Jose, and Maria. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number twelve, discuss take action on tax refund amount twenty-nine dollars twenty-two cents to Sir Ramos, Luis Garcia, and Elena M. City inquiry account number seven-zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-four, one-zero-two-zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-seven-zero-five.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ryan.
I'm moving to be approved, the tax refunding the amount of twenty-nine, twenty-two to Sir Ramos, Luis, slash Garcia, the Rino. City inquiry account number seven-zero-nine-zero-zero, zero-four, one-zero-two, zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-seven-zero-one, second.
Remove the purpose second, and we approve tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents to Sir Ramos, Luis, Garcia, and Elena. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number thirteen, discuss take action on tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents to Luis Wells. City inquiry account six-one-nine zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-five, zero-three-five, zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-six-nine-one. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
I'm moving to be approved, the tax refunding the amount thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents to Wells, Luis. City inquiry account number six-one-nine, zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-six-nine-one, second.
Remove the purpose second, and we approve the tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-two cents to Luis Wells. City inquiry, heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number fourteen, discuss take action on tax refund amount thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents to Mr. Luis Wells. City inquiry account six-one-nine, zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-six-nine-one. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Ryan.
I'm moving to be approved, the tax refunding the amount of thirty-six dollars fifty-three cents to Wells, Luis. City inquiry six-one-nine, zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-five, zero-zero-five, dash zero-zero-zero, invoice number five-six-nine-one, second.
Remove the purpose second.
Everybody ready now?
Stay tuned, man.
If it's the same person, why wouldn't it be different numbers? Wouldn't it be the same? It can be the same person, but it shouldn't have. It'd be different invoice number. The account number would be the same, but the invoice number should be different.
This can be from the, uh, tax office.
So, it's not a mistake, the same amount?
Uh, I don't think so. We just get the same, uh, tax credit, that's how we list them. Uh, I can check that invoice. All in favor of the case by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Ayes have. Item number two, discuss take action on the U.N. Congress junior, uh, Cecilia.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman?
Um, I move, uh, I, I move that we approve the contract with J.J. Johnson, um, on, on this day.
Aye, by the way.
Second.
Remove the purpose second, approve contract with J.J. Johnson. Heard the motion second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
Stay tuned, man.
I asked a question to J.J. Johnson. How long have you been doing this?
Can I stand up? Joy, yes, ma'am.
So, how long have you been doing this for six?
Twenty-one years.
So, where exactly are we as far as, uh, as far as the police department?
When you say funds for the police, you're talking about the current year budget?
No, and then we're giving a task to find money and want to, uh, purchase the vehicles, so where are we on that?
Uh, Chief Johnson? We're working on that right now. Matter of fact, I have pictures I can show you of the vehicle that we're looking at at the present time. Can I do that?
Yes.
So, how much, so they, we have the money to purchase vehicles?
Yes, ma'am.
For one or?
Well, what what we're gonna do is we're looking at the cost of the vehicle. We got the possibility that we might have to, uh, well, the way we budgeted, we budgeted to finance it. But we're looking at a particular car, whereas that we might, because of the price, uh, we might have to just pay cash for it. But we can do that through the reserve, take advantage of a, uh, uh, a good, uh, good deal.
So, what year are these, are these old cars?
No, ma'am, I, I'm gonna show you right now.
Let me see, this is not on the agenda. What's on the agenda is. Okay.
But but that's your question. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're working on that right now.
According to this contract, it says we made an agreement on the twenty-fourth of June.
Pardon me? Oh, that that was the contract language at that time, but y'all tabled it. I have another contract that has the day's date on it.
Okay, but what did you make an agreement on?
Well, no, no, that was the contract language. You have to put that language in the contract. It was to be approved that particular councilman. And that was the night that I had the medical problem, that I couldn't, I wasn't here.
Okay, so, um, you've been here twenty-one years, so have you done any type of modifications in the program? Did you do, you know, the work that you do for the city?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Should be the same?
Oh, no, ma'am, no, ma'am. Look, when I started with the city, y'all had no records on. They were, yeah, and, and, Ron, Ron, you were mayor.
We had a record.
But I had, when I came here, Ron.
But Mount Tech, you need to be there.
O- o- okay, I will. The records were a spreadsheet. The auditor at the time, he couldn't audit because he he had to almost prepare the records. Well, you heard Mr. Erskine say, "He has to have independence." You can't audit records that you prepare. So, when we came in, we had to sit down and go through manually. We've worked six months, every day here, at, to keep regular, y'all were like six months behind and just paying bills. And my firm, my partner and I, we 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 took different days coming in, and we came in here, we worked six months here, and we had, we we came in with a small hourly fee because we knew y'all's budget situation. And we worked six months just to bring your 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 accounts payable up to to, because y'all were getting hit with late payment fees. And we saved the city a number of money for that. When I came in here, you didn't have any separation of funds the way you you see them kept by individual cost center. We put all this together. There were no, the the, we we put all this, and when we, when the city has added new cost centers, such as economic development, B, crime, the center, and we even had to strip out the fixed assets to to, so these statements were agreed with General Secretary County Presby. We've gone through three bond processes, two thousand and seven, two thousand and eleven, and used the financial statements that we prepared, my firm prepared. And the city was successful in receiving those, those bond proposals both in two thousand and seven and two thousand and eleven. And and these are things that that, because of the financials that we prepared, that, and and you heard, and you've had nothing between artists the whole time we've been here. The whole time we've been here, you haven't had an adverse opinion, uh, a disclaimer, none of that. And that's what, that's the report card on what I do. That audit is the report card on what I do. Now, let me just say this here, and I have to say this, as the accountant, I can't al, I'm, I can't always say what you wanna hear. I have to be truthful to, and to do my job properly, I have to look at your situation and say, "This is my opinion." And I disagree with the man, I disagree with you all sometimes. I can only give you my opinion of the situation. The city manager, we disagree, but that's good, because if all I did was agree with you, then sometimes it might be like when you're in quicksand, I'm giving you a rock. And that's not what you want. And so, I, I don't make any decisions for the city. I simply give you my opinion based on the finances that I see.
Sometimes you do put your input into the city of the city.
No, but I don't make any decisions.
Okay.
I don't make any decisions.
No, you don't, but you try to.
No, I, I, I can.
Okay, never, never, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And now, my next question, Mayor. Now, his contract ended on December the thirty-first. This is March.
That's right.
So, why are we just now discussing Mr. Newell's contract?
Well, when we had it on the agenda, he was not here. And so, y'all, it pushed it forward, so it should have been thirty days out, but professional services contract and attorney, uh, attorney, we can extend that until we have.
It's probably going month to month at this point right now.
From professional services.
So, I mean, we should have, uh, why didn't we opt this out for being to allow other people to come in and play?
It's the, it's the council's call.
Well, I think it's time to do that, to let other people come in and make presentations and put in bids to see if they can offer the city as well. See if, see if they can out there. Not necessarily saying that you're not doing a good job, but what's best for the city is we look at other people as well.
I understand that, but, you know, I just, I have to speak for myself.
Okay, and you did, thank you.
Okay, well.
Mr. Mayor? Um, I, I, I think, um, uh, what Councilwoman is saying is, uh, that we should, um, open, open the process up. Councilwoman has not been on council, um, for that long. Um, I agree that we do need, I agree that we do need transparency and to be able to see different opinions of different firms. I think our time to do that is during the budget processing, when we decide what we're going to move it forward. Just like we had the opportunity to weigh in on how we're gonna govern the city for the next year. Uh, with that, um, Mr. Johnson just said he's been with the city for twenty-one years, and the city financially have always been moving forward with the situations that we have to deal with. Many of you who know, um, know the situations that we've had to deal with and how we move forward, um, with Mr. J.J. And again, we have, there's an independent outside CPA firm who audits what we do. We also have a city treasurer by the name of Shannon Smith, who also walks us through what we do, what we do, um, daily. Again, um,
She didn't even come to me as hard as she wants to.
That's why we have, we have our consultant, Mr. Johnson, who does that portion. Um, from that, we have the, um, so, so I would say that, um, you know, whereas I, your understanding of wanting to hear and see different set of eyes or different proposal, I I would, uh, wanna agree with that. But I I do think that the timing, um, timing is everything, and when we have our annual budget process to go through the process on how we're gonna move forward with the city, that's our opportunity.
No, they should have been discussed before this contract ended, and then, not after it ends. So, we be paying it month, month and month now anyway, so what harm is it gonna do to a lot of other people to do a presentation and or make a bid on it? It's no harm.
Well, let me say, we're gonna move, move the question, but I, I need to say this, uh, to Mr. Johnson, so the citizens that are knowing here can can hear. Um, when we did our city bond issue, we had, uh, staff and pools and and movers, uh, to go over our books and audit our books in order to, uh, classify our bonds. The city came out, uh, with a very clean opinion, and we got a single A bond rating for a city outside with a small budget that we have. And we've been able to maintain that since we issued those bonds. So, they say that there is some accounting and some accountability going on apart, Mr. Johnson, and I want to publicly thank him for that. Uh, the city council can opt to bid out the process, that's, that's up to this council. Right now, we're in the middle of 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 this budget year. Uh, you can call for, uh, doing RFPs, I mean, that's the council provide. So, right now, we're moving, and I just wanna say that part.
So, I, I, um, I, again, I also want to, uh, you know, we can be mad at personalities, um, in the decisions that we have to make and the decisions that you may not like. But Mr. J.J. Johnson is the best thing we have moving us forward with our financial obligations for this city of Prairie View, our size. People who once was, who once had leadership in this community and this city know it too. Again, please don't be confused by the people sitting in the seats who are calling for craziness. I, I'm, I'm talking, I'm, I'm addressing. I, I'm addressing, addressing, it's my time to talk. So, it's my time to talk. Excuse me. I, I'm talking.
Okay.
All right, so, um, uh, whatever. So, um, like I, like I wanna say publicly, Mr. J.J. Johnson is a professional, has a special service contract with us. He's been the best, he's, he's been working digitally for the citizens and the community of Prairie View. So, don't, don't be misinformed by the people talking. Thank you.
You know, so, just because you.
You're talking.
First of all, I never said that he wasn't capable, or he wasn't doing a good job. I just said that we need to see what's best for the city and allow other people to come in and make a presentation for the city. That's all I said.
That's right.
You know, that's what I agree with you, that's what I said.
First of all, I said I agree with you.
After twenty-one years.
Huh?
Pretty, nah, I'm.
You say something?
Yes.
Pretty good question.
Come, come make me be proud.
What?
Ladies and gentlemen, let, let's keep our personal feelings down. It's, it's, it's already involved the city, so let's keep, let's keep it down. Let's, let's keep your opinions down, just please keep your opinions.
What was the vote, Mr. Mayor? What was the vote this morning?
It was, uh, two to one.
Okay, thank you.
Item number sixteen is opening one, sealed bids are twenty-four by sixty-four metal building. We had that app for several weeks now, I think. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, we received actually two sealed bids.
You can open them up and, um, share with the council.
Okay, this bid, um, is for two thousand dollars for the building, the city hall building. And, um, it was presented by Eliseo Minchaka. If I'm pronouncing that correctly. And the second one was submitted for the amount of five hundred dollars. And, um, it was submitted by Mr. Thaddeus Singleton. And that's, that's it, that's the two bids.
In the state of the state store, Ms., uh, Alexander, what was the timeframe that they had to?
I unfortunately don't have any details about this. This was on the table for several months now. So, I don't, I don't know when it started and when it actually.
So, in our letter to whoever got the highest bid, are we going to give them a timeframe and who's going to come up with it?
Whatever the city procedure is for doing that, we're going to follow it.
We feel except for bid, if you don't think that's enough. Remember, we paid for that.
Yeah, sure.
We paid, uh, it cost us five thousand, I think, to get it and move it up here. So, we, in, uh, in service.
It was five thousand.
It was five.
To move it up here.
To move it up here.
That was the only cost for it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, move it up here. So, it's basically a gift to the city and, uh, it costs us to move it. So, remember back in two thousand eight, seven? Well, it was about eight years ago. And so it needs, it needs a lot of work and, uh, you better just let it sit in the tier. Plus, it's also costing us about two fifty to two sixty a month for electricity. So, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor. I moved that we, uh, award, uh, the sealed bid for the twenty-four by sixty-four metal building, city annex, to the highest bidder of two thousand dollars.
Second. The move was quite second and we won the bid, uh, for two thousand dollars. That's the highest bidder for the twenty-four by sixty-four metal building. For the motion, second, are you ready for the question?
Question.
All the favoring came by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have Mr. Perry came in, Mr. Perry. We have the item number eight for, uh, presentation, we were asking everybody, just to keep it as brief as possible.
Good afternoon, council, good afternoon, citizens of rural first. I'm Roy Perry. I own the, uh, property along Muse Parkway, uh, to the west side between Old and Two-Ninety. Uh, the city had an opportunity, we still have an opportunity to obtain a, uh, a grant, an EDA grant, uh, for water and sewer to complete the loop on the west side of the city. Uh, I've been working with the mayor, I have a project that I want to, uh, deploy in Prairie Hill. Uh, the pace at which we deploy this project will depend on, uh, how we're able to get, uh, tenants. Uh, just to give you a quick view, and I'll go through this quickly. New two ninety, old two ninety. Uh, these are the thirty-three acres that border Muse Parkway on the, um, west side. Sorry, I don't have enough drawings here, but the plans were to find tenants to occupy these industrial buildings. Uh, we were working with Altus Healthcare to bring a healthcare facility to Prairie Hill. We couldn't close the deal due to the size of the population. We tried to work with the university to try to bring their students in, there were not enough people here to fill up a healthcare facility. I'll continue to try to work that. I have another building, I'm trying to work with a tenant that's not disclosed, disclosed now, to see if they'll move into the building. Why are these buildings critical? For the city of Prairie Hill to obtain this grant, which is one point two million dollars, need a tenant who will come in and bring in fifteen new jobs. So, we're trying to work to find tenants to come to the city who'd be willing to occupy these buildings. We have the funding already in place to build this building. Uh, we're targeting research, development, those type activities. These other activities, uh, townhouses, apartments, uh, I would build these, fund them. Uh, my intent would be to target those toward faculty, staff, not so many students. Uh, like to try to keep towards faculty, staff, residents, giving people the opportunity for new housing, townhouses, these would be apartments. Uh, retail strip, restaurant, and trying to find a small bank to, uh, come into the area. This is the project, uh, I'm funding and developing it, uh, all seven properties, working closely with the mayor to try to obtain funding from EDA. Uh, there was a called meeting, I came to town, uh, I guess a week ago, two weeks ago. Uh, this was up for discussion. Uh, I asked the council if the next time it comes up, we could all be here, because it's an opportunity for the city to receive one point two million dollars for the water and sewer, for the three hundred thousand dollar match from the city. Just, uh, this personal project, the property I purchased, I own it, and we're ready to move forward. Uh, you're noticing a pretty wide easement, we're putting in plans for Highway thirty-six A to come to the property in the future. Just a quick discussion, any questions for anyone, council, citizens?
With, uh, current, where, currently where we're at, I think the email that went out to all council that came to the mayor was, um, on a resolution that, uh, to give him, um, some authority to move forward. It wasn't our package, it was something, uh, to, uh, to move forward with, uh, of giving the mayor the authority to, to do a resolution, enter a resolution with EDA for the grant. Um, since you're developing the property, do you have anything, um, that, that council can touch, feel, and kind of get a sense of what, what is going on?
We, uh, we have a package, uh, that was developed for EDA. That, that's, that's probably documents giving a lot of those.
Sure, what, what I'd like to do, Mr. Perry, uh, because, uh, the council did not have the benefit of the workshop that we were in discussion. We really not been looking to see the property.
Okay.
Looking at the drawings that you've done and looking at the work that you've done. So, the citizens will know, uh, the Muse Parkway project, um, will benefit the city in the long haul. Uh, Mr. Perry, uh, by coming in and requesting this grant from EDA of one point five million, uh, requires us to, uh, match it with three hundred thousand. What they would do is run sewage and water from Business Two-Ninety to Orange Road. And so that would complete a loop on that east end of the city. And it will make, uh, the corners, the intersections of James Muse Parkway and US Two-Ninety come alive. They'd be open for businesses to come in and start setting up over that. Right now, there's no sewage and water on this east end of town. So, while Mr. Perry owns the property to the south and to the west of, of, of the intersection, it'll make that whole strip, so everybody that owns property, all the families that own property on the north side, it will give them value to their property, and it will make those intersections now attractive, uh, to other types of business like restaurants, et cetera, uh, service stations and others that be looking to come in and set up shops. So, it's, it's, it's something that we really need to take a serious look at. Uh, and, and just so y'all know, Mr. Perry is a Prairie Hill graduate, uh, engineer by trade. Uh, whatever he did with the university, they named the College of Engineering in his honor.
Right.
So, uh, he's, he, he did something, I don't know what you did.
Yeah.
Got a glass on time.
But also, he, uh, chaired the foundation, Prairie Foundation for New Stadium. That's a sixty million dollar project that's being built as we speak. Once he finished that project, he said, I want to help the city of Prairie Hill and the citizens of Prairie Hill in his give back. This is him stepping up to the table as a Prairie Hill graduate, saying, I want to give back. And that's what he said.
Where is that property located, uh, Mayor Jackson?
It's on James Muse Parkway, starting up here by Mayor Sam's house. Uh, his property, Mr. Perry bought, uh, Mr. Basil Martin's truck.
Yeah, Basil Martin's truck.
So, that track runs adjacent to Sam's property, all the way from Business Two-Ninety to US Two-Ninety.
This is along Two-Ninety.
But what that project will enable us to do is to extend sewage and water from, that stops at Mayor Sam's house. So, we'll be able to run it all the way to Orange Road, so it'll come out there right by his, his house, and we'll connect there. So, that means all, all the landowners along the land will have sewage and water so you can, your property then becomes more attractive.
So, right now.
That'd be, uh, sure, Addison, for the first thing. More high.
Pushed to make sure that they have a Prairie Hill address. So, I know he was, and the others will, will fight for that. So, I wanted Mr. Perry to present, uh, to the council. Uh, we had sent out a resolution, I think, from Commissioner Barnett, and sit down and have conversations with Mr. Perry, with the engineers. Uh, they looked at the right of way, uh, future development in the right of way, and, uh, Commissioner Barnett, he can speak for himself, but he wrote a letter in support of the, of the project. So, I think we got, uh, uh, a person here that's, that can help us do some stuff.
We're proud. The, uh, currently we're in negotiation with a, a tenant hopefully for the research building, that's critical for us. We can close that deal, we can get the fifteen jobs and maybe EDA requirements, so.
Okay, so I'll be asking y'all to do a, a, a call be, we need the super call on the call be.
Yes.
We can't do it with three, we gotta have four. Uh, I didn't see that, I thought the resolution was.
It wasn't in this package, but it was, it was not in this package.
Yeah, so I wish I could.
All right, you come back.
Okay.
Any questions?
So, I, I wanted him to introduce this to the citizens, so, uh, y'all be aware and one of the council will know about it. And so then we can have a, a workshop and a, a call be.
Right.
We, we need four, to have a call be, so we can move this forward and get that application in, uh, to EDA.
Will they be willing to bring the architects up and they discuss with you anything they need to do?
Anything y'all got for Mr. Perry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I clarify something for the record? There might be some confusion. On the previous matter the city council took action on, and that was the award of the contract on the sealed bids, I wanted to explain that when, uh, we solicit bids for work, uh, what the law requires is that you award it to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. You can have a low bidder, but that bidder may not have been responsive to the solicitation. He may not be responsible, in other words, it may not appear that he has the capabilities, the manpower and the resources in order to do the work. I have also seen situations where there is so much of a spread difference between bids that appears that maybe the low bidder might have been mistaken and have misjudged the amount of work that is involved. So, you're not obligated to award a contract to the lowest bidder. It is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, the one bid to the, for the building, that's what you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, what, the action the council took on the two thousand dollars that we own?
I, yes, I just wanted to explain that you award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. So, if the bidder did not appear to be responsible, if his bid was not responsive to the solicitation, if it does not appear that he has the capabilities and the manpower to, uh, to be able to perform the work, you can go to another bidder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next item on the agenda. Item number seventeen, this is a public hearing on a variance request for to move a four bedroom frame house in Prairie Hill Section Three, Lot Two-Two-Six, Block Twelve. We are now going to a public hearing, and if you understand what you're getting, if I'm, I'm wrong, if you just, uh, reset, and go into a public hearing?
Yes, we're going into a public hearing.
Until we're open that.
And we call the time and.
Time now is, uh, seven fourteen, by o'clock, so. Seven twelve, uh, we go, uh, to a recess to hear any presentations, uh, in a public hearing on moving, on the variance request for a four bedroom frame house, Prairie Hill Section Three. Anybody want to comment on this variance request? Just, uh, come, y'all, that's how you'll come on up.
Do you want to come in?
Okay, let me just say this real quick. Um, I was given this document by, uh, Dr. Brown. He had to leave, and I don't think that he believed that, uh, some of the other members would be here. So, did you want to present this?
Well, this is just a public hearing, this is not asking for their report right now.
Okay.
This is even from the public.
In relation to the planning and zoning committee, I'm on that view. And, um, I'm also, I also own property in that particular area where this frame house, where the people want to build this, uh, set up this frame house on blocks or whatever. It's not going to be on a foundation, a concrete foundation. And, um, I oppose this particular building because it would, it's the type of building that more than likely will drive our property value down. And we disagree with this. And, um, no one on the committee voted to approve this particular project. And, um, we also looked at, we all, we all know this is a flood prone area. And they were talking about building it up, building the foundation up a little bit to where it, the project, the, uh, the house would not flood. But, from what little bit we know about the plaque and et cetera, it would also create more flooding on our end of the street, and that's what we surmised. Uh, so, my commit, my community, my area, my street citizens, our street citizens, we do not approve of this house being built there. It is a, most of the, all of the houses on that street are brick. And we are pleased with how they look. But there is one other house there that is, um, hardy plank or wood. And this house is also hardy plank or wood that will be, that will have to be cut in half and moved into this subdivision. And our subdivision in relation to the city ordinance, uh, the city article, three point four zero zero, I can't remember right now, states that no buildings will be brought in, into the city. They would have to be built up from the ground. And this house that is supposed to be brought into the city, the city ordinance says that it should not, no building should be moved into the city. And that's one, that's another thing that we're looking at. And if, maybe if the city got the flooding situated, maybe they could come in and build a house there and et cetera. Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm just going to reiterate on what Miss Cyrus has said because, uh, the placement of that house is within the same block of where it is that I live. And there is a ditched area in the back of that property, and it floods. And right now, if you were to go out to that area, you would see that it's still flooded right now from the rains that we received last week. Honestly, um, had I known, or had my family known that that area would flood like that because it was prior to the time that the city had been incorporated to claim it as a flood plain, I really don't see why anyone would want to build in that area. Um, and as Wes indicated, that if that land is built up and that drainage is set up to a place. of where it is flowing under two ninety, as it should, then that might create an entirely different situation. But it has not been done, and I don't, uh, really see why it is that this dwelling would be placed on Ruby Street. It doesn't, the dwelling, I saw the picture of it, it does not match any of the homes that are on Ruby Street at all. Um, and then, uh, it was said that there would be a family that would move into that home. Uh, but, you know, we don't know here or there because there was a home that was built there that did have a couple. They got a divorce, they moved, and there have been neighbors moving in and out over the past three years. And so the way that things are right now and the way the, uh, things are being built up in Waller, these companies, and old two ninety, it's a lot of transient, uh, things that are going on. And those of us who have been here, I've been there since nineteen seventy-two, that's my home place. And, you know, I just don't think that we are quite ready at this particular point to accept people who are moving in and out, and that has not been the makeup of that, uh, neighborhood. So I am opposed, uh, to that happening until there can be improvement that's made in the drainage area and also to look to see how is that going to, uh, how is that dwelling being put there want to help the residents that live on Ruby Street? So I am opposed to that as well.
Public comments? Another public comment? Alright, another public comment, we'll close off the public hearing at seven twenty. And we took item number eighteen, discussing taking action about the variance request on a four-bedroom frame house in Prairie Hill Section Three, Lot Two-Two-Six, Block Twelve. I ask all the fourth from the panel of the council.
Hey Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt, but will I be able to do a presentation that's, that's?
Well, it was a public hearing.
Well, okay, that's fine. Well, if there's questions, then I'll take questions. I understand.
That was a public hearing.
No, I understand. I completely understand.
Okay, I was, I was given this report by, um, uh, Mr. Brown, and he had to leave. The title of it is zoning meeting, City of Prairie View, date March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen. Propo, proposed project, variance request by Noah Martinez to move a four-bedroom house into the Prairie Hill subdivision, Section Three, Lot Two-Two-Six, Block Twelve. Agenda item number eighteen. Location Prairie Hill subdivision, Prairie View, Texas. Um, and it says here, vote to approve signatures, and there are none. Vote not to approve signatures, and there are five. And the notes, Article Four Point Three Zero Zero, frame housing and mobile home regulations, eight. It is unlawful to move any frame house or mobile home into the city. Order is fifty-eight dash eighty adopted July thirtieth, nineteen eighty.
That's the report, sir.
You've heard the report from the planning and zoning commission, first of all.
So, um, has this been, uh, checked out by the engineer, the city engineer, the city? Have they been over there and looked at the property and seen about the drainages or anything?
Uh, the city engineer's been over there, Half and the Half and Associates have been over there. We were part of a study that we joined in with Waller County, uh, Half and Associates. They did that, uh, San Jacinto watershed area, and that area was identified as the, the flood zone in Prairie. We have maps, uh, to show that. Uh, we flooded out at least three or four times over there, and we've gone in there in a boat, um, all the way down Ruby Street to evacuate the families out there. That is a drainage area, all the water from City Hall, the water from, uh, Waller, well, not Waller, but from Sam's place, water from the university, all of it comes through there. What hurts is that the highway department's got the, uh, road there, and they have the box coves. But the rest of it is, serves as a dam. So all of the water don't rush through that box cover, it backs up. And then the folks that live over there are telling me that, uh, it comes up, and sometimes it gets in their homes. I know Miss Wright, uh, her mother and father, we've gone over there several times and had to get them out, uh, tie ropes around them and wait that. We waited out the water, you know, up to our waist, and we've gone in there with boats, uh, all through that neighborhood. All the way down to this house, all the way down to the other end of Ruby Street. Um, just recently, we had Mr. Alexander, uh, get some bags of gold there to look, cause we're saying, how can we expand that, uh, drainage ditch to move the water? And I think the lowest bid we got was twenty thousand dollars just to clean it out. But then we'd have to spend probably equal amount on the other side, cause we'd have to clean it out, uh, going on the other side of Old Houston. But then that's gonna get the county upset with us, cause now we're gonna flood if everybody going down, down streets. So it's a, it's a, it's a. Uh, that's, that's all I can say, uh, I, I wish we could buy everybody out and turn it into a park. Uh, cause it's not, if it's gonna flood, it's when it's gonna flood, right? Uh, and we're just speaking from experience, uh, most folks got watermarks in their houses. Uh, this house, Mr. Barnett, he built a dam down at the end of Ruby Street, but that water jumps over that dam. Uh, even this last flood, it covered that end of the road. Uh, this house, her bed floated down there, and we had to try, we couldn't even get in that again. Uh, we had students that had the duplex down there, got on top of the roof, we had to get them off the roof. I mean, this, this is not a nice area, I mean, I wouldn't wish that on nobody. I just said it up front, I'm not speaking from what we heard, it's what we know. We've been out there in the cold and, and waited through that to get folks, so it's up to the council, but that's, that's a tough area. Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Um, my name is Sophie Sevio. The, the lot that is proposed to be developed is Lot Two-Two-Six, which is there on Ruby Street. I've owned that lot probably for about ten years. And, um, an opportunity came up for, for a home, to put a home there. Um, one of the, one of the things that's, that's, um, very apparent now in these modern days is most people can't build a home from the ground up because it is so prohibitively expensive. There was an opportunity to purchase a home, I didn't have all the cash, I'm just telling you my story. So a friend of mine purchased the home. He, uh, is gonna move it to my lot, I'm gonna purchase it back from him in about two months. So I'm gonna really be the developer, but for this purpose, you know, he is the one who is the applicant because there was an urgency to move the home by the end of the month. And one of the reasons that, um, also, I mean, I'm always concerned, having been an elected official and having, having sat up with these folks, um, on the dais, uh, especially with Mr. Jackson, is what are we doing in the city of Prairie View about bringing in tax revenue? And that's one of the things that the statute also addresses when it comes to variances, is what, um, you know, once, once this property comes into the city of Prairie View, it's rendered to the city for taxing purposes. There are thirty-five lots on Ruby Street currently. There are only eleven houses. The most recent housing construction was built probably in the last ten years. And if you ever drive on Ruby Street, you'll know that that house was built up with some very practical considerations. That's exactly what has been planned here, is to not move that home until the land has been built up, until a, a person who has the proper expertise to look at the grade, to shoot the grade, and to tell us what exactly needs to be done to build up that property. So it is not gonna be a problem with regard to flooding. But the flip side of that is, this is a lovely, modern home that was built, you know, in nineteen eighty-four. It is a Jim Walter construction. It has been redone on the exterior with hardy plank siding, which is a wonderful durable material that is being used now for that kind of construction. Anybody who knows about construction knows, hardy plank siding is excellent material, excellent material. Um, it has a metal roof. That is one of the modern movements with regard to roofing styles for construction projects. Uh, in fact, my home in Alta Vista has a metal roof. There's other homes in Alta Vista that have, you know, up, updated those metal roofs. It's an eighteen hundred square foot house, it has, um, good hardy plank siding, it has, it's a four-bedroom, two-bath home. There's also a porch that is going to be deconstructed and hopefully reconstructed over time. The, the primary goal would be to do the house first. Um, there is a porch that is nine feet by forty feet, that's an additional three hundred and sixty square feet that could be closed in. If you've never been to my house, you know that I had a, I had an open porch and I closed that in. So it also raises tax value. Um, I know that that's a big concern. I said earlier, there are thirty-five lots on Ruby Street. It's a lovely residential street of primarily single-family homes, I know there is a duplex there. There are twenty-four vacant lots, of which my lot is one. I am proposing to bring a home into the city, being respectful of everybody and everybody's needs and everybody's issues with regard to the idea of a home being moved in. I can't afford to build from the ground up. Daryl and I have a daughter in college and another daughter getting ready to go to college. That's the reason I'm not building from the ground up. It's a practical reason that I hope that everybody in this room can understand. But it's also a home that would be, um, in terms of value, the projected value. And I'm real proud of my home in Alta Vista that I updated. If anybody has ever been to my home, the value of that home has increased over fifty thousand dollars on the tax rolls because of the updates that were put into my home in Alta Vista, that was built in like the late sixties, early seventies. I'm very respectful with regard to what you do to a home, to make sure that it has, um, curb appeal. You know, I'm not gonna be able to tell you all, all about the landscaping, you know, and everything else, but it does that. I'm gonna wrap it up, but here, I'm coming to the money part, which is important for the city council, and I respect that, Sheriff. Thirty-five lots, twenty-four vacant. The value currently of the, for the appraisal district for every single lot that is vacant is seventy-five hundred dollars. When you multiply that by twenty-four, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of tax revenue. With this home, we are projecting on one lot to get a home that the value would be at least a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of tax revenue. So you got twenty-four lots at a hundred and eighty thousand, and you have a, a person who owns property here who is proposing to develop a project that will, with one lot, have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of value. All of that rendered to the city for taxing purposes. Absolutely, there's consideration with regard to the flooding, and that's why you do good planning, to make sure that it is safe. And that, and, and again, I just wanna point out that there wasn't any expert review with regard to, to flooding. It, it, it is conjecture, okay? I understand that there are issues, but with regard to my lot, I will take that into consideration and build the land up as I would be required to do to make sure the house is safe and stable.
Thank you very much. Uh, first of all.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I need to approve the variance request to move a four-bedroom frame house in Prairie Hill Section Three, Lot Twenty-Six.
Now, do you, I have a question.
Uh, we need, uh, the motion there for second, we open up for another motion? Councilman?
I got one, now, didn't the, uh, planning and zoning committee take over the justice, right?
That's correct.
Well, I make the motion, but that's, uh, it's on to me. Planning and zoning here, I see.
Certainly.
We move the proper second, we accepted, uh, the recommendation from the planning and zoning commission to deny the, the request for variance, uh, to, uh, to move a four-bedroom frame house in Prairie Hill Section Two, Lot Two-Two-Six, Block Twelve. You have the motion second, or you give a full question?
Question.
I would say that Kate by saying aye. Louis Paul. As held. Item number nineteen, twenty-two Johnson.
Mayor, county, uh, as a part of our law, you require your view.
Chief Johnson looking now, so.
It's required to make a presentation, you got regarding the annual works of profiling report, but then you report, but then you pack it on the last one. But I do have confidence that you don't have to, with it, feel like that. It was in the last board package, so if you don't have one today, I got. There, there is nothing, uh, remarkable about the report, there's no indication that there is, is, uh, any problem. Uh, it has been committed to the state, so there, there are no issues. The required by law to make the presentation, just counseling regarding the annual works of profiling report. As in past year, there, there is no, nothing indicated that there have been any, that the department had any issues in charge of works of profiling. It is, uh, fairly clear.
Any questions for Chief Johnson on the rest of the post on the report? All right, Chief Johnson, what's your?
Um, is this, uh, gonna be uploaded on our?
Yes, we, we can upload it on the website. I wanted, the, uh, uh, state system has been down for, for entry, but I think we, we got it entered.
Yeah, it's entered.
It's, it's been entered, so now we can put it up on our website. That they had some delay for, they had some technical issues, so that there was delay in being able to enter on the, on the state site.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, um, item number twenty, the lawyer questions on nineteen, uh, presentation by Chief Johnson, city of Prairie Police Department, Police Department policy, like Chief Johnson.
Just what you'll find is a, uh, table contents on the, uh, proposed, uh, policy revision for the police department. Uh, one of the things that I want, I, I made some notes on the front there on the link, but you will see the policy has been, uh, adapted from the, uh, Texas Police Chiefs Association model policy for small agencies. It is in, uh, accordance with their best practices, uh, program. Uh, we, we use that for the purpose of, that at some point in time in the future, to position us to wherever we decide to move forward with accreditation, we'll already be in line as we start to move with this policy and start creating records and, and demonstrating that we're in compliance with those policies. Uh, it will allow us to be able to seek state accreditation. And then at some point in time, if we choose to do so, to seek the national, uh, clear accreditation. So we, we stay with that policy, yes.
This is the, uh, what has been submitted to Ms., the old secretary?
Yes, she, it, she has been, she has reviewed, uh, over the last several months. And I, like we say, she's done a great job in, in, uh, helping me to, uh, formulate this. Uh, there's been some, uh, editing that allowed it to fit, uh, what we do here. But by and large, it is, uh, those policies that have been recommended by the Police Chiefs Association. They've already been vetted through legal processes and so forth, and it meets their, their standards. You'll see the numbering system, you'll see that they might skip a, a number, and we did that purposely. So at some point in time, if those other policies that fit in those slots, uh, become applicable for us, we can simply slide them into those slots without having to completely reformat the whole policy. But it keeps us in line with their standards, and it also helps us, as I go through and look to see, uh, because they, they change, they periodically put up, put out updates. So it allows me to be able to go on to the, uh, their site and look at their updates, and, and they are, they are attached to these numbers. And so it allows me to stay current on what their updating, their, their policies to be. So you'll see some, you know, it might skip from, you know, two point four to two point seven or whatever, uh, that's, that's why. That, that's, that's intentional, because some of those policies did not apply to us, some of the things we, that, that just not applicable to us. And so at some point in time, if they become, uh, part of what we want to include in our policy, we can add them into those, to those slots. But, and you'll see on there, you'll see some abbreviations, those that, uh, uh, the, uh, TPC, A, you, you'll see that in there sometime, it's Texas Best Practice. So you, you, you'll see those types of, but that's why that's there. And, and again, it allows me to go back and look, as we look at those accreditation standards, to be able to go back and match them to our policy.
So have all, uh, full time and, and the other officers received a copy of the?
It, it has not been, been issued, because there's not been proof.
We want to, uh, share down a, a report, uh, and open up, so if you wanna go in, it's just a presentation, there's no action.
Yeah. And, and so what, what, what we'll be doing over the, over the next month, I, I would invite you, if you have questions about any of those. any of those particular issues to, 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 you know, get with me, and we'll set up a time, we can look through the, through the particular policy and, and make, make whatever clarification that you have. At, at the, at the next meeting, we, we will have an, an action item on the agenda for the actual approval of the policy.
I, I thought I wanted to come in, you and Ms. Alexander, I thought y'all, y'all done a long job on this, I mean, I've spent a lot of hours.
I, I had a lot of time. She, she has spent a great deal of time, uh, helping me edit and, and giving their opinion on how this is to be formatted. So I, I think we are, again, thinking, uh, ahead, hoping to position us to where, when we decide to go for the state recognition and eventually the, the national accreditation, this, this puts us on the right track to be able to do that.
Yeah, I think that's something we, a goal to see a short shoot for, for, for recognition. But talking about uniform, well, that's not on the, I read it in the next report, so. All right, any other questions for Chief Johnson? Thank you, Chief Johnson. Okay, good job. Um, item number twenty-one, uh, this is a review of the environmental impact receiving batch plant on Old Houston Highway and health effects, and citizens are pretty good, thank you for that.
Um, I want the city to, uh, take a more aggressive look once again at the health and environmental impact that the ba-, the batch plant and the pre-cas, pre-cas plants have an effect on the citizens and the environment. And I'm gonna talk with our, um, ask our commissioner if he will work with us and, um, using some of the funds that the county may be using and with the other, uh, people like the landfill and using the resources to get some of those resources so that we can, uh, do some help for our city, as, you know, making ordinances pertaining to that type of work over there.
Uh, one thing I would, uh, definitely, Marshall Bliner and the community, uh, is adjacent to it. Uh, they should have some information and some resources, they did take them all, uh, and provide a testimony, uh, when they were trying to get their, uh, renewal of their, uh, extension to, to expand that plant. So they may have, they may serve as a good resource for information, to give some data.
So is that, is that plant already like the, is that within the city?
Same, same.
So they, but they use a, for their address or what?
Do they provide any, any file?
Give them a self?
Self test.
That they pass to the city?
Uh, we'll take a look at that information from Mr. Bliner, I think they have, uh, is that anyway?
I just wanna, uh, to do with, uh, let everybody know to be able to get in with the county references to this.
Okay, uh, item number twenty-two, discuss take action on the passive, uh, application of a noise ordinance?
Yeah, because all time of the day, and I mean, early in the mornings, it may be nice to hear these big booms. So we need to ratify, we have our, uh, ordinance and practice to the noise stuff that they have over there. Telephones ringing all time of night, you know, all across the city, the purveyors. And the citizens that live next door and in that community are complaining about the noise. Oh, you, you do? Okay, I'm telling us we can live right there.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
Yeah, yeah, me too. So we need to be, do we have an ordinance or create ordinance and breakfast today?
Chief Johnson, isn't there, isn't there a current noise ordinance in place?
Yes, there is.
Yes, there is, you do have a noise ordinance.
Is it?
Yes. Well, it's, it's rather lengthy, and I would want to, to warn everybody with it, but it, it defines, uh, uh, what, what it prohibits is, uh, uh, loud music, uh, horns, uh, player pianos, um, I, I think what it, it prohibits loud noises between ten-thirty P M and seven A M the following morning. Uh, and, and, and they describe the loud noises, they're giving examples like musical instruments, horns, guitars, and so forth, uh, it, it talks about the operation of a gravel pit, rock crusher, and machinery, uh, that creates a lot of noise if it is within six hundred feet of private residence, a church or a hospital, also between the hours of seven P M and six A M. So I don't know if the cement plant, plant falls into any of these categories, it may be that it's already covered, I.
So is that, uh, more of some decimal readings, or is that just enforcement?
There, there is, uh, yeah, yes, there is a decimal reading, uh, uh, in excess of eighty-five decimals between ten A M and ten P M, and eighty between ten P M and two, so. So, do we have any magic number to say?
I guess that would be a question for Chief Johnson, would that be an issue of just enforcement? Is that a decimal reading, just to kind of control noise, or, I mean, that's, or is that like a, a by complaint, like one of those things that?
Normally, it, it would be by complaint, it's, it's not that, that we would just sit and monitor it, you know? But, yeah, normally, on those issues, about, and, and normally, what we've dealt as far as noise has been in regards to gathering. And so, uh, uh, I have not received myself any complaints in regards to the noise there, so I, I really wasn't aware that there was an issue.
Do we have, we have a monitor?
We, we have ordered them, uh, they have been on back order for the last several months, so, uh, they, they have been ordered.
Just realistically speaking, I don't think there's any way we can stop people from making noise. And I guess it's just a matter of enforcing when they do make the noise, correct? I mean, because you have to remember who's, who the majority of our community is, you know, so.
So that's the point, i- is the noise a, a continuous thing or?
Well, I guess you, well, it's a big boom, you know, they dropping those.
But we refer to, we still refer to the senior.
Senior, then when they drop those.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm just saying, is that, that, that one big boom when it?
No, it's not this morning, it was several times.
It is, it is.
All time of the day, or, you know, late at night, early in the morning, people complain about that, you know, two or three o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
You know, if people live like.
Well, that, that is something that we can enforce, we, we, we can. Uh, and so we'll, but that, if you, if you don't know, they're, they're in transition right now. Uh, they've been in receivership, and so there's a, uh, a big squabble over ownership. But, uh, we, we can talk with the management there and, and see if we can get some voluntary compliance, but we can monitor that, and when we get those decimal meters and, and, you know, if that's what the ordinance says, then we can definitely enforce that.
Is our, our, so our cu- current ordinance fits, uh, will, could address this policy with having to do with the cement plant? Does they, it operating within a certain time frame? I don't necessarily know if we can, if we can, can we, um, police them if, if it's two o'clock in the afternoon, which is, it's outside of the ordinance period, because I think the ordinance has a time period.
The one that says ten P M to seven-thirty A M, I think they operate now, so, probably five A M, so they're doing stuff in two, five A M. So, so we can enforce that, but we can't, we can't stop them from making noise more operational.
I'm not trying, yeah, but I'm referring, referring to hours after hours, and they're over there at two or three o'clock in the morning loading trucks or moving those, pillars or whatever you wanna call them.
So that'd be enforcement, that'd just be notifying the police?
Must notify the, uh, the association.
And then, and then I, I can tell you, we, if, if we will, we will have to have, uh, those meters, and hopefully, I mean, we'll, we'll check on them, see what, what the, you know, we can, maybe we might have to order something different. Uh, but I can tell you that, that there, that there'll be pushback, so we'll, we'll need to make sure that we have all our legal, uh, to be able to demonstrate that the noise was above the, uh, allowed decimal level. But, but we can definitely do that. But in the meantime, we, we can have a conversation with the management and talk to them about it, but, but if they're operating early.
What I've heard from when she's, from the little part she read of the ordinance, it just says operating loud, just even, it doesn't even say there's a, there's a, a noise level, it says operating certain loud machinery is automatically violated.
Yes, one of the things that ordinance doesn't, what loud noise is. Katie has a, a noise ordinance which defines what a loud noise is, although it's rather subjective. Uh, and I can send a copy of Katie's ordinance to you, but it is, uh, any, uh, loud, unusual, and unnecessary noise that annoys, disturbs, injures, or endangers your comfort or your well-being. Um, uh, this is a business, you can't run them out of business, but I think we can use the power of the city and the power of your office to see if we can get some voluntary compliance, and if that doesn't work, then we move to the next level.
Cause we, we wrote ordinancees, I'm sorry, we wrote ordinance before that, that did not allow that I, if it operated in an area where there were, that they couldn't even start working until a certain time because of that very same thing. Because just by the very nature of what they do, they're gonna create.
Yep, you're right, you've, you've got a pretty good ordinance there, but it's just, I don't know if it fits the, the actual circumstances, and so I have to rely on the chief and his, uh, manpower to go there and monitor where they are and what fits.
Um, what the county has done in, in this past week, the county has hired, uh, an attorney that is in-depth and, um, knowledgeable about all the environmental impact. Environmental also means noise, not only just your lungs and your ears and your eyes, but, but noise also. So this is what I suggest you do, you ask them for the county help, I'm gonna give you the help. But I need you all to, to make sure that the rest of the county has given you the help, okay? Let's use the environmental attorney that we have that's working on other issues in this county with other cities, and see if there is something that can be done from that aspect. Because when you talk about noise, you're just not talking about the boom that you hear, but you're also talking about the, the, the mental strain and everything that it has on, on a person's, uh, uh, body. So that, that's what I suggest, Mayor, and I'd be glad to sit down with, with, uh, the mayor and the county judge, and, and let's attack this from a, a different perspective.
Can I, can I ask something? Cause I know my aunt live on, on that street, she has a eleven-year-old twin, and I know from, from personal experience that those trucks are constantly flying down the road. So, I mean, if we're just gonna take this complaint, we might as well add that one to the list of complaints, because that, those trucks fly, I mean, these are eighteen-wheelers flying down a little two-lane road.
Over Houston.
Over Houston, that's flying all, all time of the day, and, you know, there are a lot of kids that live back there, so, you know, when you talk about that environment, we should, we discussed that too.
All right, um, anything else? You want it? Got her, you want it? Okay, item number twenty-three, you want it?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Um, we need to be more, uh, monitor the burning that the citizens are doing in, on their property, cause it seems like citizens are going around picking up people's trash, their junk, and taking it back to burn it. And you can see the black smoke, you can smell it burning in your eyes, and, and people are like burning tires, microwave the others, TVs. And we need to monitor them carefully. They have, and I'm not talking about burning their brush after the property bonfires, I'm talking about the tires, stuff like that.
That's already a, a violation, you were burning tires.
Yeah, it's a violation, but it's not being monitored, it's not being, being done about it. You need to like follow up.
But that, that's, I, I think that would be something, something different than the burning, then, for the, oh, okay.
It's an open burn.
You know, I, I believe that's already, you already have something in place for that. So I think it's just, I think these are just management enforcement.
Yeah, right, exactly, as I said, monitor, they need to monitor and enforce the policies.
Anything else?
So what, what action?
The monitoring, uh, the, I guess that would be the police department, we have, we don't have a code enforcement officer here, I guess. So that would become.
That would, that becomes, I mean.
We just need to be more conscious of it, because people are doing that, you can see the trash piles burning.
We, we, I, I think we're getting to the point as a, as a police department, where we're, we're, we're getting to the point where we're gonna have enough people working at one time to where we can start, you know, taking time to, to enforce these ordinance, because, you know, for a while, we only had, you know, a handful of people, but, you know, we're constantly hiring new people, I think we're getting to the point to where we're gonna have the manpower to actually enforce ordinance better than what we have, and then, then it just becomes a matter of us holding them accountable for enforcing these ordinance. Because, you know, for a while, we were just running out of manpower, we wanted to write, you know, tickets for people's speed, but then we wanted to, to, you know, to tell the college kids to stop making noise, you know, we, we were, you know, kinda picking our poison at the time, but now, basically, we get to the point to where that's no longer an excuse. So, I mean, it's just a matter of us holding, holding our police department accountable.
That's fine, that's great, as long as, I mean, it's definitely people monitoring, taking care of it, that's all.
Okay, I agree, a hundred percent.
Yeah, uh, your action on item, uh, Department of Energy reports, Mr. Johnson.
Uh, good evening to the mayor, city council members, residents of the city, friends of the area, and department. Uh, we're into the month of February at the present time, and if you look at your report, page one of the report, uh, again, this is the fifth month of our current fiscal period, we, we're at the halfway point next month. But, uh, if you look at revenue, revenue was, uh, million five versus a budget of a million one. That's a favorable position of four hundred and two thousand, and that's what they expected at this time because of the early collection of, uh, property taxes, which is spread over twelve months equally. So, uh, that's what's pri- primarily contributing to that favorable budget position. The next item is expenses, expenses is eight sixty-six versus a mi- a million one eighty-three, and this is a favorable position of two hundred and sixteen thousand, and, uh, thi- this is well right here, uh, I will get into one item a little bit later that's helping to create that favorable position. If we go to page three, page three is the, uh, cash position. If you look at your cash position here with all of your, uh, deposit accounts, we got two million five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and primarily, a large amount is a general obligation bond of two thousand and eleven for a million forty-six thousand. And then the, uh, cash balance for economic development B for five hundred and thirty-two thousand. I will bring to your attention tax department, cause you know, that's our, basically our reserve amount. And at this time, the fifth month, we're only showing two hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and we had to move money out of there over to debt service because of a large debt service payment that we had to make on the, uh, two thousand, it's seven, two thousand and eleven bonds, and I'll, I'll get to that too. Uh, now if we go to page six, and this is in the general fund area of your financial, uh, the three things here that I will address is, again, property taxes, franchise taxes, and sales taxes, all three of those are showing a favorable position. Which we, again, I did allude to the fact that property taxes should be favorable, it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars favorable. Uh, if you look at, not look at, but on your tax report, uh, to date, they've collected seventy-three percent, I think it is. And so, uh, our average is about eighty-eight percent as far as tax collection. Hopefully, we'll be better in, uh, in that area. Uh, people allude to the fact that we tried to, we tried in the past year to, we sold some properties. And when you sell those properties over delinquent taxpayers, and so, once people buy those properties, they become, uh, part of the new tax roll, so that, that helps us to collect taxes on those particular properties. So that's been an effort that has been put in place, and we've been very successful from that standpoint. Uh, if you go to page ten, page ten will show public works, and I alluded to the fact that there's an item that is helped to create a, a favorable bear- bearing, and what that is, is if you look under operating expenses, this is public works, under sewage wastewater charges, for whatever reason, the university hadn't sent us a bill for three months on sewage wastewater. And as you can see, we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars a month for sewage wastewater. So there's a favorable variance there right at forty-eight thousand dollars, but that's misleading because that bill will be coming, and the city's treasurer, she's working on that right now in the liberation with the university, but they've had some problems from what she can tell in their, uh, procedure to put the invoices together. I don't know what the problem is, but we haven't been billed, so roughly three months there, so that's why you see zero there. We haven't received any, anything paid.
Don't they want to charge late fees on that?
No, no, we won't be, because they haven't billed us, so they can't charge late fees. My concern is the development of.
Yeah, I'll be calculating what, what we owe.
Yeah, yeah, that's what they're doing, right, we know we owe some money, but we don't have, we don't know.
Master meter?
Yeah.
And our wastewater goes through the master meter, meaning basis of weight, based on, on.
Right. And, but they haven't billed us for three months, and so we're working on that, we see, you know, just what their problems are, and I can't address what their problems are. But we're still waiting on an invoice, yes, sir?
I have a quick question, the assets that are on page four in cash, that, uh, what bank is that? The assets that are on page four in cash, that what bank is paying?
Prosperity. Prosperity. And we have entertained the movement of some of that over to credit. And that's something that I will discuss with council, you know, to possibly move something over there. Because we are getting a return on that money because all our accounts are interest-bearing. It's not a lot, but all of our funds are earning some interest. If you just look at the interest column, that'll tell you the amount of interest we're getting per month.
Can you check out the rate, the interest rate from the current bank account?
Yeah, and we'll report back to you. Now if you go over to page twelve. Page twelve is the debt service account. And this account here is where we report the payment of all our debt for the current period. This includes the debt that's the general fund. This includes your interest and your principal payments. If you notice, under operating expenses for the current month, under interest on bond indebtedness, we just paid a hundred and fifteen thousand and forty-two dollars and fifty cents this past month. And that was on the oh-seven, oh-eleven bond. What that's telling you is that at the current period, where we are in our financing on those two bonds, we primarily are paying interest and very little principal at this time. It's gonna flip as we, but those are thirty-year bonds. So we're only in those since oh-seven and eleven. So I just wanted to bring that attention that we did make the interest payments there. And this is the other thing that we're fortunate in that we made all our payments on time. We're not sustaining any late fees or what have you, and we're not jeopardizing our bond rating here. If you go over to page seventeen now. On page seventeen, this right here is the long-term debt. And in this section here, this will show you the amount of debt that the city has that the property taxes have to support. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The amount of debt that the city has that the property taxes have been pledged against at this present time is under long-term debt. That total is four million five sixty-six eight ninety-four. And the current portion is eighty-seven thousand eight two six. And that's just the principal. So what that is saying is that we do, left in this year, we have to, we have principal payments of eighty-seven thousand eight twenty-six that we have to satisfy between now and September. That's gonna become due, and that's not talking about the interest itself. But again, I just want to bring to your attention the amount of debt that the city does have that the property taxes are pledged against. And part of that problem, again, is the fact that property taxes are major revenue that we have to pledge against debt. And so I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention.
Page fifteen?
Pardon me?
Page fifteen.
On page fifteen? That's economic development.
Right.
Right.
On, who reports? So on the loan, you know, we got the loan from USDA revolving loan. Who reports or who's supposed to be?
When you say, you're referencing?
The senior Prairie View and Economic Four B got the revolving loan grant from, see, the USDA or USDA, fifty-four thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
The, that process of when that loan has started to be paid back or when that comes to circle back?
Where's accounted for? Look at the balance sheet.
That's you.
Page fifteen, you see Odyssey Training Institute? You'll see that decline. As the principal is paid off on that note, you'll see that amount decline.
And so is it, who do we request kind of information about what's going on through you or through Economic Four B in reference to, there should be some? I don't know, again, we tried to get this loan out for like two years. It finally happened maybe a year ago. And I want to get a progress update on that company.
Right, I have to get what Economic Four B, if we can give you a progress report on that. But that's where we were gonna account for it there, and that's where you can monitor it right there. And that's the principal amount. And again, this was a grant. So Economic Four B doesn't have to give that money back to anybody. It was a grant to Economic Four B.
It was a revolving loan.
Yeah, but no, 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 I thought that too. Economic, it was a grant to Economic Four B. This money is not owed back to anyone. Yeah, yes, no, no, that's what I'm trying to.
But it stays in, we understand it.
Okay.
But they're supposed to be, so, hold up. The money is supposed to be revolving back to Economic Four B, not the city. But it's supposed to go back into an account so we can loan this money out?
Exactly, exactly, right. And that's what we're counting for, right, right. You absolutely right.
But just so, so we can understand what's being discussed at the state now. Talk of, just briefly about the legislature. Our total burden taxes and how much of that total budget property taxes cover? I mean, what, maybe a head boss?
Okay. What the mayor's alluding to, and some of you have probably seen what the legislature has put before its agenda, and that's property taxes. Wanting to give relief to taxpayers. The city of Prairie View, and I just alluded to the fact, we have debt of over four million dollars that we depend on property taxes to service that debt. Not sales taxes, not franchise taxes. The property taxes is what's pledged against this debt, okay? And so we are, we are, and I can't put it in. We depend on property taxes. We depend, now, some of you here, it came up that why don't we give a larger exemption for over sixty-five? We do give some benefit for over sixty-five, but we don't give nowhere near what Harris County gives. Because we just can't afford to do it. Notice that your school district taxes, I don't care where you are, oh, let me use this one here. Mud district taxes. There are no exemptions if you live in mud district. Because a mud district can't give you an exemption because it has to pay for itself. It has no other form of revenue but from taxes. But here in the city, we do have other forms such as franchise taxes and sales taxes. That helps. But again, if you look at our percentage of operating funds versus debt funds, we have a high percentage of our property taxes going to service debt than we do have going to operating activities. That's just the reverse of most cities. That's just the reverse. But again, it's our situation. And we stay afloat regardless of the situation we have to deal with, and we are doing it.
The auction will be Saturday one o'clock. And we do have local kids that participate in it. And we appreciate you all coming out and giving us.
Okay, mayor's report, I'd be very brief.
Ask the comptroller's office to make sure that we're getting our franchise percentage from our cell phone.
Yeah, we're getting franchise from the operators. What people do is you can ask for a review of particular operators' finances. And because what they pay is a percentage. San Bernad is a major franchise filing area. After that, we do have the cable company. We have, they tell me, we have a gas company out of Waukegan as part of the franchise in the city. But you can ask for the company for a financial to see if we are getting. You don't have to go to the comptroller's office.
Well, no, no, so the front goes, so there's two things. That is one thing we make a review. I'm talking about specifically, there's an ordinance that I emailed to you from the attorney's. To the mayor. All we have to do is pass this ordinance as a body. And then we send this ordinance to the comptroller's office. And on your cell phone bill, there's about nine dollars that people don't account for on your cell phone bill that goes to the state and can go to the local municipality. We need to make sure that the city of Prairie View is on everybody's bill that we're getting our fair share. We can get that through the ordinance.
Yeah, can I get back with you? Because I gotta talk with attorney too. Thank you, sir. Ministerial report, Ms. Alexander.
Good evening again, everyone. Got a big kind of brief. Back in two thousand, February two thousand and fifteen, a home room charter permission was established to create a home room charter for the city of Prairie View. They put that charter before city council, the city council approved it. And now the next step is that you all, the citizens of Prairie View, are gonna receive a copy of that charter in your mail probably as early as the beginning of next week. That will be on the ballot in May two thousand and fifteen. So I just want you to know to expect to be receiving that charter, the home room charter for the city of Prairie View in your mail. And then the other thing that I would like to say is that with the city council's approval, the city is set up now to start receiving online payments for your water bills. For your water bills, for your building permits, for your information requests. So we're all set up and we're ready to go with city council's approval. As a matter of fact, the website has already been updated. It's just that the link is not active until we go live with city council approval. It's coming, well. In two thousand and ten, city council approved a vendor for online payment. Since then, the municipal court is the only department that has been using that online payment system.
Basically, we didn't want to do anything to get all of them. Even though pre-approval was given, we wanted to make sure that the council.
Is there, based upon what the mayor's explaining, would we think that there, is there a reason why we want to have two different vendors?
We don't have to. Are you asking me if we have to?
No, no, is there a reason why we would want to have a separate vendor? Who does municipal court also would be doing implementing the water?
I can't see a reason why you want separate vendors. It's gonna be, everything is separated by account. The city has numerous accounts. And the way that it's set up is that when a payment is made, there is information that'll have to be filled in, and it's gonna be sent to the proper account.
As our system, and I forget the vendor, because I was on councilwoman approval, there's a vendor that Lawler uses.
Okay.
That you can pay your electric online. Is it similar system? Because I haven't got a ticket in the court system, so I don't know how that works. So is it similar to that system?
I really don't know what they have, but I can explain our system to you. You'll access it through the city website. So you can go online and make your payment anytime, twenty-four hours a day. You can even come into the city and make your payment with a credit or debit card right here at the city. And it goes to a third, when you click on it, it doesn't, you don't enter your information in the city. It goes to a third-party processor. So once you click on that link, although it will look like it's the city website, it's not. It's taking you to a secure site where you can enter your payment in. Once you do that, you're gonna automatically get a printed receipt. And then the city will be able to pick up that payment and apply it towards your account. I just need approval to click the button so that we can start online payments.
She had approval in two thousand and ten, she just got to that point where we could expand, so.
So I have a question in reference to this city charter. What are we gonna do as a city? We vote unanimously, we vote unanimously at the council to support the home rule charter? Is it a mail piece or something we're gonna be putting out to remind people? Not only just a copy of it, but something saying that the city council voted unanimously to pass this that we can put out?
Okay, here's the issue. You, the city cannot push it. You can advocate, but you cannot advocate. Now, let me tell you, there is a cover letter that the mayor is going to sign, which reminds people to vote. It tells them what document they are receiving in the mail. And that approval or disapproval of that document is going to be on the ballot. So that's all, that's really all that you can say. You can educate, but you cannot advocate. Now, if the citizen wants to look at the minutes when that was, when it was passed and will see how it was voted on, they can do that, and they can do that on themselves. But to have you direct them to that, I would not advise doing that.
You want to talk about the city's strategic positions?
Yes, I do, but before we move on, I'd like to say that the charter has been translated. Uh, yes, I do, but, but before we move on, I'd like to say that the, the charter has been translated from English to Spanish. So you're gonna receive an English version and a Spanish version in the mail. And regarding the city secretary position, uh, there was a committee that was formed, um, to, uh, go through the process of reviewing the resumes as well as choosing a final candidate and making a recommendation to the city council on a candidate. And, um, they, I felt like they were very professional and that has been done. Uh, we are gonna go into executive session this evening and the copies and the recommendation from the committee are all included in what you're gonna receive during the executive session, including all of the resumes, copies of the resumes for everyone who submitted one. And then, uh, before I take my seat, did you have some, did you have a question?
Did everyone who, who submitted a resume get interviewed?
No, they did not.
How was the selection process made from the...
Why, why don't we discuss that in a second?
Okay, okay.
We'll, we'll get to that.
The other, the other thing I wanna mention before I take a seat, um, I'm not gonna really give the report from the municipal court, but I do wanna say that we did participate in the statewide warrant roundup and that happened at the beginning of this month. Uh, the city of Prairie View partnered with some of the other, uh, county law enforcement and, and I wanna say that as a result of that, um, we disposed of another thirty-one cases just during the warrant roundup and those cases represented about seventy-five hundred dollars. And unfortunately, there were, uh, two arrests made. But that's what the warrant roundup is for, the closed cases. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Okay, uh, public works, can you say that again?
Good evening, dear council members, citizens of Prairie View, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I guess this might, I wanna talk about, first of all, safety. Uh, we experienced a lot of rainfall in the last couple of weeks, okay? And it's getting to be springtime, so it don't look like it's gonna light up.
Just give, well, let me give a part of clarification. Ms. Alexander, since we don't have a court, can you proceed?
Yes, I don't think people are gonna be voting on any of this, but I...
I just wanna make sure, cross the T's and D's.
All right, like I was saying, with, with all this rainfall we're experiencing, nine times out of ten, you're gonna start getting these animals up and moving around. And some of these animals are gonna be snakes. So be careful out there when you're walking around, moving around, because they are starting to crawl. It's getting warmer and like I say, the rain is running them out of the ground or their hiding places, hibernation place, wherever they may be. So be careful. Fire ants is another one. Be careful with those, those things. I mean, I'm talking basically about protecting the children. Make sure they're aware of what those things are and what they can actually do to you. It don't take many lessons to be learned about those fires. Once, once they get you, you'll forever know, uh, rainfall. That those ditches fill up pretty quick. You know, that's, that's one of the things that I want to talk about. So, in, on the safety aspect of it, children again. Make sure you, you are mindful of where your kids are doing these, these downpours. Because it's, it's so easy to, to, to lose, lose your balance and slip into that water and can't get out. Kids and adults, adults alike, you know, just be careful. This is one of the safety briefs I like to give. With that rainfall drainage, we have, we have drainage issues. So what we're gonna be focusing on, have already started focusing on is, is, uh, getting some of these waterways clear so that water can, can continue to move. Because as it stands still, it will rise. So if we can get the water moving and keep it moving, that would, that would, it's really gonna help us, gonna help the city, gonna help the homeowners and everybody, uh, involved in this community. One of the problems we face with this rainfall is infiltration. And, and infiltration is when rainwater or water enters, enters the collection system, uh, through broken pipes. And we were talking about, uh, the university building us sewage treatment. Okay, when it rains, we're not only gonna be built for sewage treatment, we'll be built for treating rainwater, okay? And the question was raised, do you think the pumps are large enough to, to, to move this wastewater? Yes, the pumps are large enough to move wastewater. But when you combine it with, uh, with rainwater, it, it makes, it makes it very difficult. When, when there's, uh, everything's on a normal basis, uh, business as usual, those pumps run in on an average of one hour to four hours a day pushing wastewater over to the university. The day it rains, most of those pumps run anywhere from seventeen to twenty-two hours a day. So that, that, that gives us an indication that it, it's, it's not the pump side, it's the amount of water that, that's being, that's being handled. So, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go into, uh, looking into getting that, certain areas evaluated and try to make a correction of, of the issue, the problem that we're, we're facing. And one of, one of the things that we'll be doing is smoke testing. If, if some of y'all are not familiar with smoke testing, what that, what that does, the, the individual or the company will come in and he'll, he'll place smoke into a manhole and, and, and seal the leaves of the manhole. And wherever there's a crack, that smoke will find its way to that crack and, and eventually to the top of the ground. So that will be, uh, a place where we can pinpoint, dig and repair instead of going and digging up, uh, three or four hundred feet of pipe at a time and see if there's crack, uh, which would be basically throwing away money. So we, we wanna fix this, 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 this issue, but, but we wanna do it cost effective.
Could you talk about the, uh, the path that you had made on this period since the last council meeting on water bills?
Yeah, uh, yes, sir. We had an issue with the, uh, water plant two on the other side of the, the city over, over by the cemetery. And, uh, lightning, you know, hit a well, uh, hit the mo, well mode and, and burned it up. So, uh, we, we got a WW payment, the people that were, uh, initially, uh, installed that system, uh, to, uh, give us a bid on replacement. That well was replaced and put back in service on Monday morning. And, uh, actually Friday, Friday morning. And I actually ran it until Monday morning to make sure that we weren't, you know, we're gonna have any issue with that well once we got it back in service and...
Was, was there a warranty on that?
There was a warranty on it, but the, but the warranty had expired.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna claim that to the insurance.
Yeah, we will, yeah, we will, we can claim, but the initial installation warranty was gone. So, so we're gonna claim it on, on the insurance.
That will be an insurance claim.
Because this is the second one, right?
Yeah, yeah, because of the need, we had to move forward to get it repaired. But it will be claimed on insurance through TMS, our insurance carrier. Any other P I D you wanna talk about with everybody?
Yeah, one is, uh, there was electronic read meters or smart meters, uh, some companies call it. Uh, right now, we are, we are, uh, talking to, uh, different companies. We are actually municipalities, cities about the ones that they, they, they've already installed in their city. We ask questions like, uh, did, did it change the, the, the cost, uh, did it change the, uh, the, the bill, uh, the billing? Did it, you know, did the citizens take on any, any more debt, uh, because of it? And that answer to all that, that, that we contacted was no. If, if, whatever amount of water that you use, that's what you pay for. No, no hidden, hidden fees or anything of that, that nature. Uh, we talked to one, one city, uh, that, that really, that impressed me on, 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 on one thing is was, uh, accuracy. We, we, we have a lot of, lot of customers that, that seem to believe that their, their meter is not accurate, uh, that they're being overcharged, uh, you know, that sort of thing. And this, this, this employee from their city told us, when a customer complains with these, with these electronic read meters, when a customer complains, what they would do, they would send their public work department out there with a five gallon bucket of water and, uh, with a five gallon bucket, excuse me. And that employee would fill that bucket up and, and, uh, once that bucket was full, then, then the, the input clerk, all that citizen would go online or doing the real time and, and, and look at, look at, look at their, their account and see that five gallons of water did go to their meter. So it's, it's, it's a very good way to check, check your, your system. So right now, we are, we are entertaining the companies that, that deal with these, uh, types of meters and, um...
As we start to kinda move through whether we, where we're at with smart meters uh, and, and the direction which the city's trying to go with our wastewater treatment, have you been tasked with, uh, um, long-term planning? We know that the city of Prairie View has to have its own wastewater treatment facility for us to be able to maximize what we're doing here at the city.
No, we haven't passed any of that. We've passed a, um, previous company gave us some data, San Trent and, uh, our city engineer, but not Mr. Alexander.
Wh- wh- when are we gonna bring that back to continue to kinda update that as we move through, through our plan? I think that's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting. It's, it's gonna be imperative we do that because of just like right now with the, right now, we're three months with no bill. We don't know what we're gonna be charged and there's, and this is not the first time. And so I want to make sure that we pick back up, working on the things that we need to be able to move forward to be able to make this a reality. Maybe not this year, but then if we start this year, maybe we may make it happen two years from now. So again, um, I, I, it's something that I wanna see us pick back up.
Well, that's one of the, the goals we set out, uh, with utilities is to eventually get to our own treatment plant. That way we can control those costs, so that's something we'll take up during the budget process. Thank you, Ms. Alexander. All right, um, police report, Chief Jones.
We have, uh, I have the, uh, monthly police report. If you'd like to ask any questions regarding to the current report that you have.
Any questions for Chief Johnson?
Give you some update on, we, we are, are, uh, we've been working, uh, had several meetings myself, Mayor Jackson, and then I've met with him a couple times myself with management at the, uh, Brookside apartment. Uh, they have hired a private security firm. Uh, then we will be, we met with them last week and we'll be working together with them over there. Hopefully, if, if season comes in line and we start to deal with more student activity, those sorts of things. So that's, that's a very favorable thing, uh, in that area. Something that we've talked about, we've met with them several times about a lot of other proposed projects that, that we might be doing, uh, there in the future. And so, uh, that's a, you know, I'm glad to see that they've stepped up and, and hired the security because they do need someone on site pretty much all the time. So we're, we're working forward with that. We're, we're moving forward with our, uh, we're completely caught up, up to date with our UCR reporting, which will again help us as we do that, as we, uh, stay in current with that. If we move forward with the accreditation process, that will, that's a critical piece of that, that, that we're doing, that, that report.
Can you explain that?
Uniform crime report is basically what it does is allow us to compare ourselves with other similar agencies as far as the, uh, index crimes, the major crimes, the homicides, uh, sexual assaults, robberies, burglaries, larceny, those types of things. And so it allows us to compare our crime rate, uh, the number of offenses along with the clearance rates and those types of things. But it, it all plays into the bigger picture of is what we decide to, to move forward with that recognition. But it also just outside of that, it's something that we do because it also, uh, puts us in a position to be eligible for, uh, some of the state and national grants. Uh, we weren't able to apply for those because we had not done that previously. So as, as we move forward with that, we'll, we'll be able to, be able to apply for more of those, those grants.
You talked, we talked earlier about, uh, the work that had been done on that report that's...
We, we started that, we went back an entire year and I have to give, uh, our mentor's assistant Stiff Dale credit for that. Went back a whole year and she worked diligently to get us caught up, to try to get us a year back, to try to get us a year, so we maybe be eligible a year ahead of than what we ordinarily would have. So we've gone back and, and, and that's, it's a lot of data to enter. Literally because of the way our system is now, uh, she has to literally go back and read every report and, and, and glean that data from that report to enter that report. There was a, a lot of work to do, but we are, we are caught up. And so, uh, it, it, it took a lot of work, took a lot of time, but it, I think at the end of the day, it's gonna be well worth it.
But I, I haven't mentioned it because I wanna publicly commend Ms. Tinsby for her work on that. We really should commend that.
Chief, uh, one I wanna, uh, commend the police department, uh, for their work for this month. Their department activities citations are up. So that, um, so I just wanted to say, um, tax dollars at, at, at work. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, um, I know we talked about, I'm gonna propose a, 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 a body camera, ordinance a resolution. I know you've been working on that. Will you be able to give us some recommendations so in the ordinance we can...
Yes, we will. Uh, we're, we're testing a, a body cam now that I think is, is, uh, one of the best that I think that's on the market right now. So, uh, we're, and I've been talking with Mr. Johnson about, uh, finding funding to, to purchase those. I am also, uh, looking for a possible grant from the one hundred club that we might be able to get to him, pay for those. So we're, we're looking at that. But in any case, I, I think that's something that we ought to move forward with and, and well that there will be, uh, policy procedures to govern it. It, that, as you can imagine, uh, you know, even though the body cams have been around for a while, they have not been widely used. So that is a, an area that is kinda right now, kinda uncharted territory as far as court cases and those types of things. But I think it's, it's, it's imperative that we have a strict policy on what we do with those, with that, with the information that, that's recorded, that we properly secure it, uh, that we prevent, uh, it from being altered, edited. Those types of things have to be in place for, uh, you, you have to have good policies in mind that you don't want those things ending up on YouTube and those types of things. And then that's what happens, uh, oftentimes. So that there needs to be strict policy in place for how you manage those.
Well, you made a major step in getting policy management complete, so if we keep moving, all we have to do is just keep...
We just keep, we keep adding, adding to that business. And, and as we do that, there, there's some standards that, that are out there. The internet, uh, associated chief of staff are, will be putting out some, uh, gold standards in regards to that. So we're looking at what, what they put out and, again, we try to use those types of things when possible because they've already been vetted, they're, they're, you know, already approved and been tried and tested and have gone through. A lot of times the legal muster already, so we, where we can, we try to use those things that are already out the road and trying to reinvent something.
Any other questions for Chief Johnson? Thank you, Chief. All right, um, we got executive session. Y'all got a copy of the tech report and the municipal report, uh, and the municipal's half report. Executive session, city council will convene executive session for section five five one point oh four. Do council reports when we go into executive session?
Good evening, citizens. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to serve. Thank those, uh, business leaders who will be coming to the business leader roundtable hosted, uh, here in the city of Prairie View. Thank the, uh, city staff who's also attended. Uh, Chief, Ms. Alexander, Ms. Smith, um, again, we're gonna move the... Um, again, we're gonna move the city forward and it's gonna be up to um, different citizens, neighbors, business leaders to help us move that forward. So again, thank everybody who's been participating in the Business Leaders Roundtable. My hands off the second, the third one will be uh, next month in April. Again, uh, there is a My Brothers, uh, as you know, we've been successfully and working through the My Brother Keepers Program uh, from uh, the White House Initiative with President Obama. Tomorrow, there's a conference call with uh, uh, with actually uh, Michelle Obama will be on the call tomorrow as we continue to move that forward. We're looking for citizens who wanna help participate. Uh, what they're gonna do is try to infuse uh, the initiative, with, within the initiative, a two-year and four-year college piece. As you know, we have a current university in our backyard, so this is something that helps us move, move this program forward. Again, thank you for allowing me to serve.
Mr. Ryan?
Okay, if you're looking at the flyer that I passed out, this is the thing I wanna stress is uh, about two months ago, I mentioned the Washington Avenue project that me and other young entrepreneurs are working on around the country. And what that is, is we want to recreate the nineteen twenty-one Black Wall Street. We already have a hundred acres that was donated to us in Monroe, Louisiana, and so that's where our first project is going to be. But in order for us to generate the traction that we need, we first have to educate our people on the importance of the Black Wall Street and the importance of what we call the Washington Avenue, named after Booker T. Washington. So, what we're doing is we're traveling through A P C U's across the country and we're hosting what's called the Liberation Tour. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna educate people on the importance of owning businesses, we're gonna educate them on, you know, how to, how to start businesses, and we're gonna promote black owned businesses. Because if you know anything about the original Black Wall Street, you know, if you read on the flyer, it tells you it was over six hundred businesses, twenty-one, twenty-one churches, twenty-one restaurants, thirty grocery stores, movie theaters. They had everything in a one-stop shop, they were self-dependent. And so, what we wanna do is we want to create a, a producer mentality instead of the consumer mentality. But before we can do that, we must educate our people. And our first stop of the tour just happened to be Prairie View University. So, on April first, we're gonna be over in the uh, the uh, the, the Science Building. And uh, we're gonna have, we're gonna have, you know, uh, gifts. And um, I told you back in February that we were, we were taking donations. And really the donations are just to, to raise awareness. And, and that's, and maybe a month we've raised over twenty-five hundred dollars already. So, we're raising awareness, we're getting the traction that we need, and now we're taking, we're in step two, we're going around educating. So we, I would love for everybody to come out there April first and just, you know, hear us and watch us and support us, you know? If you wanna donate, you can go to bewashtonav.com and you can buy t-shirts, we have sweaters, beanies, whatever, whatever, whatever you would like to help support our, our movement, we would greatly, greatly appreciate it. And also just, I would like, I just wanna, I just wanna leave you with this, you know? We have to remember what our focus as a city is. You know, oftentimes we come in here, we fight amongst each other, and I'm, and we leave and our meters aren't conducted. The, the reason why I said it was because I wanna see the city move forward. And so anybody with a business mentality would know that if, if a business wants to, to bring their business into Prairie View, and they came, they sat in this room and saw how we conduct the business, would they wanna bring the business to the city of Prairie View? I know as a businessman, I wouldn't, because all we do is, we, we fit into the stereotype, we can't get along, we argue. I wouldn't wanna invest my money into a city that I can't trust. So, it's time to set aside personal vendettas, pride. If you're, if you're, if your goal is to help move the city forward, you know, still be critical. I'm not telling you not to be critical, but at the same time, there still has to be a partnership between us and between you and between us, because at the end of the day, if we're not united, you all won't be united. So, I just say, be, be a part of the solution, not a part of the problem. So, you know, my name's Jonathan Reynolds, I appreciate you allowing me to serve.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan.
I just wanna remind everyone that the Waller High School F F A and Ag Show will be conducting their annual show at the Fairgrounds during Friday at one o'clock, and the auction, and the auction will be Saturday at one o'clock. And we do have local kids to participate in, and we appreciate you all coming out and giving us some, uh, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mayor's report, I'll be uh, very brief. Uh, we have been working with uh, developers on uh, building housing projects, we've got a couple more meetings set up. Uh, y'all met Mr. Perry the night, uh, part of his plan is to put some housing in there for uh, professional faculty, staff and others that uh, wanna build a home and residence in Prairie View. Uh, so that's gonna be critical. We have to be on our base. Uh, we have a large uh, population, probably have the largest populations in Waller County, but it's mostly a student base. Our population census says five thousand five hundred seventy-six residents, four thousand live on campus with another thousand that lives around. So our demographic of, of folks that are here year-round and, and, and have families and paying these taxes is very small. So we have to grow that base in order to attract uh, retail and other developments. So we'll continuously be working on that, that's something I appreciate the council working with us on. Uh, we have some, I, I give you these updates because uh, these are some of the goals we pull right out of our comprehensive development plan, our strategic plans, uh, to let you know that we operate from a plan, these are not things that are just popping up, but things we're constantly working on. So we feel pushing forward the idea of farmers' market, uh, you're gonna see a lot of development uh, coming up in, in reference to that. Uh, University Drive, uh, that's gonna be developed with, there was a meeting today, I wasn't able to make the meeting, but they, uh, the, the developers that we met with, uh, we met with Texas Doc, University developers in the city, uh, they have our overlay for downtown Prairie View. Uh, they're gonna be introducing to the council some landscape and ideas, cause the idea is the landscape that really make it beautiful. So when you turn off of, of two ninety, uh, especially on that stretch between the university, uh, that's gonna be completely a landscape to, to me, that's something that y'all can be proud of. We wanna have that, that effect that is, is something that is very, very upscale and nice. Uh, we're talking to uh, entertainment and recreation folks. Uh, the Recreation and Wellness Center is now open, many of you have been over there, it's a great facility. Uh, you can go there and workout, you can join membership, it's open to the community. Uh, they're moving rapidly on the Bowlin Avenue and the other venues over there on Orange Road, uh, that's gonna happen. Probably the next project that's coming over there is gonna be that Romeo Arena, so uh, we're about to get with the commissioner and really look at how we're gonna widen Orange Road, cause that traffic, once they open that Bowlin Avenue, really gonna be an issue. Uh, we had a, a meeting today uh, with the service station folks over here on Richards Road. Uh, it was a good meeting, we had, uh, the showers came to the meeting, we talked about issues that they had with that. Uh, and we also, uh, will be taking in uh, the bids uh, for the extension of the sewer line along Richards Road that will redirect the flow uh, from behind the shower house down Richards Road down to the Richards Road lift station. And so once that, hopefully that'll move simultaneous with them coming in and requesting their permits. So they understand that we'll be removing that manhole from behind the shower's house, so that'd be the only one on that line. So the problems they identify with us should be taken care of. One of the things, Commissioner, that uh, we, we looked at is eventually we're gonna widen that area right there. Uh, the water is being addressed, uh, the drainage gonna go to the southwest, so they got a, a detention pond. An engineer was here today, we looked at a detention pond, but he recommended some type of median that we need to look at with you and the county engineer to see, put the median there that would help regulate that traffic flow along there. They're gonna have an entrance to business two ninety, so that's gonna be the larger entrance. So most people coming in there will use that entrance, but that's gonna uh, help our sales tax tremendously, having that convenience store there. That's uh, that's needed, uh, and it, and it's gonna be well lit upscale. They're gonna leave the lights on for a little while and then they'll turn them uh, so that the showers can see, if it's creating the shadow effect or something, they will work with them to do that. So, we had a real big uh, court meeting with them today, so I was very positive about that. Uh, the relending grant, that's an opportunity for young entrepreneurs to get involved. Uh, we have that money from USDA, so as that lady pays it back, that money's not meant to sit in the coffins, it's to be relent. So we wanna encourage entrepreneurship. Mark on the calendar is May sixth, is gonna be Industry Day on campus. And the reason I'm saying that is because that's a day we inviting a lot of the local private businesses, especially those that are producers, as Mr. Reynolds was saying, invite them to come to campus and see what research is being done on campus and what opportunities will be available due to commercialization or commercial transfer. So that's a good opportunity for us to start getting into the, the production game, start manufacturing, start looking at things that are, that are happening right there uh, in those laboratories and, and uh, get them out there. Uh, those, basically it, uh, but that's gonna be, I, I don't have time right now, but I'll send y'all notices out on that. Um, we got the National Night Out Initiative coming up pretty soon, I wanna make sure that, uh, Ms. Hargus has been working on that. Uh, the Community-Based Police and Chief talked about that. We know all our problems are not gonna be solved with just putting a lot of boots on the ground, but we gotta have these programs. And we've been working with neighborhoods to develop these programs so we can have a sustained, long-term community influence to this thing and really make it work for everybody.
I have a question, Dr. Jones. I know we talked about, uh, I know we have the, the whole police form, and we talked about streetlights. How do we, how do we go about, cause I know on my street, I do, I think my streetlight has an issue, cause it, it goes off sometimes outside. So it's, like, it's, it's pitch black, and I know darkness generates crime, and I know I was, I was coming home yesterday, I see a guy walking in my neighborhood, but I, I know him personally, I've known him for a long time, I know what he does, and he likes to get your fingers. So, I know, I know if it was a more lit area, you know, it's probably wouldn't mean all that.
We've been getting input from the neighborhoods, and so, uh, we've got them at the end of. We finished those lights on Hargus, Henderson and Charleston. And these are not regular streetlights, these are those solar, solar big square lights. I mean, they, Ms. Hargus, you wanna speak to those lights that we've been putting up, they, they, they light it up pretty good, I think.
They, they just completed, um, we haven't done hard as yet, but Henderson is lit up now. And so, and I already said, you know, it does warrant a crime and a criminal, so Charleston and Rashaw are lit up as well.
What we need is you to tell us, for you to light that light, and you put it on the list, cause we're going neighborhood by neighborhood. So Santa Claus has a work ethic, and they've been working in Prairie, uh, Vic- Vicburg, uh, Concord Village, I think that's where they are now. They, they give us a list, uh, Prairie Hills gives us a list, Pine Island, we put something in Pine Island. So we need them in other sections of town, we need to, to know. Well, we just need to know where, so we can see about pole placement and stuff like that, so we're trying to light it up. So, uh, uh, let, uh, let the city staff know, Ms. Smith, she's been hunching on that project. So we're trying to get those lights on so people can feel safe in that community. And uh, the National Night Out, is Hargus, y'all are coming along with that?
Uh, Tuesday, August the fourth, so I'll be meeting again with the, um, leaders, so we're well on our way with that. And we do have some people who are willing to donate some tons.
And, and, and we appreciate uh, citizens taking these initiatives so that we can provide safety. Cause it's gonna take all of us working together, uh, and, and we tend to that to heart, so thank you for that. Uh, we got a, a spring path that's a work with planning, uh, we're gonna be working with neighborhoods on getting that done. And that's bringing the students off the campus to come out, work with the neighborhood captains, uh, to get projects done, pick up paper, paint, to clean up our city, and, and that's going along real good. So we're real excited about what's going on here in the city of Prairie View, and uh, we thank you for all you do. Uh, with that, uh, we go into executive session. Uh, City Council will convene executive session pursuant to section five five one point oh seven four, the Texas Government Code, uh, dealing personnel matters of delivery, appointment and forwarding, evaluation, reassigned, duty, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer employed, namely City Secretary, Colonel Watson, for uh, police personnel assembly. The City Council will convene executive session pursuant to five five one point seven one, the Texas Government Code. Consultations with our attorney, secret vice, uh, from our attorney regarding endless contribution litigation or settlement of matters which are due to attorney, to the government body, and Texas discipline rules of professional conduct and state law, Texas clearly conflict, this chapter. So, we go to uh, recess and void to executive session, it's now six fifteen fifty, Mr. Reynolds, hold on just a minute. Eight forty-nine, and we ask that y'all would step out as soon as we finish, we'll be back.